Good morning. I now call the August 19th, 2021 Administrative Briefing and Work Session of the Marion County School Board to order at 9:00 a.m. Please silence your electronic devices to avoid disturbing others. I now ask the school board attorney to explain the rules for this work session. Good morning Attorney Powers.
Good morning Chair Thrower. This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form and hand it to the school board secretary. After the Board and superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the secretary will call speakers' names in the order received. At the podium, speakers are asked to state their full name and address and to spell their last names. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the Sunshine Law, the Board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout this meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules.
Thank you Attorney Powers. And before we move into our agenda, I will reiterate that we are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success. We will now begin the work session with the superintendent's administrative briefing. Good morning Dr. Gullett.
Good morning Madam Chair. Members of the Board, great to see you all this morning. Have a few updates for you during my briefing this morning, and I'd like to begin with Mr. Knight coming forward to share an update on Howard Academy. Thank you.
Okay, good morning ladies and gentlemen of the Board. Ms. Prestapino, Mr. Powers, good morning Dr. Gullett. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you once again about the progress in the Howard Academy Plumbing and Restoration Project. Last week, you may recall that, or last Board's work session rather, you may recall that we discovered that the men's restroom floor was originally constructed lower than the women's restroom floor. That situation's been rectified. All of the subflooring and the underground structural work has been completed on both bathrooms, as well as the underground plumbing work completed in both bathrooms. Currently, we are finishing, or the contractor is finishing, the overhead plumbing lines, which consist of the water distribution lines inside the building. They'll be stubbed out and then connected to the main primary water lines at a later date. And we have begun the framing back of the walls as well. That'll complete next week, and then we'll be in position to start setting up the sheet rock and wall covering, which will take up to two weeks to complete both bathrooms, ceilings, and walls. We were supposed to start this week on the exterior plumbing, which is the underground plumbing system for the whole site. Unfortunately, pretty much the entire plumbing crew got COVID, or at least was quarantined because of it. So we did lose a week in the schedule. They will begin next Monday instead. Everybody's coming off their quarantine by the weekend. However, it's not expected to impact the overall schedule, because it's a very light in terms of schedule impact to the overall project. It really consists of two different trenches, the piping work associated with it, and then the final connection towards the end of the project for all three buildings, starting with the one we're working on. So in a nutshell, we're still on pace, even though we had that setback of the plumbing crew being affected by the pandemic, but it is not affecting the overall schedule. And that's the short and quick update. Certainly happy to answer any questions for you.
Great. You're good? Thank you. I appreciate these updates.
Absolutely. Appreciate giving them. Thanks much.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
The committee was going to give a report today. I asked that it be moved to the next work session. That's why they're not here today.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you Madam Chair. So next item I have is consideration for the Board. I know that after I conclude my briefing, we will talk about the resolution with Attorney Powers, but I would like to ask for Board's feedback on consideration of having vaccination sites located at some of our schools. We've talked a lot about face coverings, but something that keeps coming up from the Department of Health in our data and hearing from physicians is vaccinations. And so while last year we worked very closely with our partners in offering that, I think with student vaccinations as well, that providing access perhaps at some of our sites with some parameters, not impacting the instructional day, but providing access to help with that endeavor for vaccinations for those who choose to get vaccinated, that it might be helpful if we partner with that and provide some access at some of our sites. So I'd like to get your feedback and thoughts on that.
I'm interested to hear more, such as time of day, such as what the message is going to be, things like that.
Is the Board comfortable with me moving forward with coming up with a plan so that if we have it available in areas of need, that we work with a couple of our schools and set some time limits so that not only students could access for parents who choose, but also staff and members of the community could access it? I would absolutely, I'm very adamant about protecting the instructional time, so it would be outside of that, but if we make those available, we know that a lot of our families feel comfortable going to the school site, and it might be a place for them to access it.
I'm also thinking that if it's in the spirit of really beating this back, and we're going to get involved potentially at this level, that it's also going to be important from our physician community to be providing information at the same time of how to keep ourselves healthy. You know, we all know that we should be healthier. We all know that we should be exercising. We all know that we should be eating right. We all know that we should be reducing our stress. And those are the three of the major things that I am getting reinforced to me about what's so important to, if you do get this virus, to be able to survive it. So if we're going to get involved at this level, this is just one Board member speaking, I would like to see a more multifaceted message, so that people really are aware of the full impact of what we're dealing with in these schools, and what each person can be doing individually. What I heard last night at a Physicians Roundtable was that if you're having symptoms at this point in the community, chances are you likely have it. It's spreading that fast. And that's not me talking, that's area physicians from many different perspectives of how to approach this virus. So we want to be the messengers of information, and we want to be the messengers of hope and reality. And the reality is, is that I don't think anyone in this audience is going to raise their hand and say they want schools shut down. That is certainly a last resort, as far as I'm concerned. That's already happening. Our neighbors up in Georgia, in Ware County, Georgia, are shut down. You know, if you don't have teachers and you don't have bus drivers, you don't have a school. So those are some of the things that come to my mind, and that's right off the top of my head. So I'm interested to hear what the rest of the Board has to say.
So Chair Thrower, I appreciate what you're saying, to have a comprehensive message about general healthcare, just overall diet, exercise, all those things that we've tried to do through the fans clubs, and we don't, I'm not certain we actually have fans clubs on every single campus. I know we don't have a greenhouse on every, you know, all of that, but all of those things that the hospital district has tried to help and partner with us. And I know we're not talking about the resolution yet, but while I would be fine with offering vaccination sites on our school campuses in partnership with the Department of Health and/or Heart of Florida, or whomever those partners might be, I want us to be very careful in the language we had in the resolution that we had drafted yesterday of promoting those vaccines. And so I'm hoping that language has changed since we originally saw it, because I believe we have to be very careful in how, we are not healthcare providers. We don't have enough healthcare providers in our school campuses as it is. We don't have enough school nurses in our schools as it is. And so we are not those trained medical professionals. And so if we were doing it basically as a community service and providing just an additional location, I would be fine with that, but I believe every bit of promotion needs to come directly from the Department of Health and/or the healthcare providers themselves.
Thank you Board Member Campbell. And actually, that's exactly what I spoke with Mark Lander about with the Department of Health, so that we are basically the host site, but to provide access to the community at large, that's what it would be. So they would do that, and I know he's worked closely with Preston Boland with Emergency Operations, and so that's what we would do. And we, as the superintendent, we're not saying that this is something that's expected, it's just that we are partners in that work to provide access.
And I also wanted to mention, I had a couple of parents reach out to me, actually within the last 12 hours, and I was speaking with Andrea Simmons this morning, that currently the quarantining procedure for those students with vaccinations, I believe, has changed, but it's not currently listed on our website. And she said she is working on a chart of what that looks like, so all of that will be updated for our families hopefully by the end of the week. I don't want to hold her to that, but hopefully she'll have that updated on our COVID website. Just talking about quarantining procedures and what that looks like for those that have vaccines versus those that do not.
The information is moving very quickly. It's changing quickly. You know, we're at the mercy of decisions that are being made from higher up than us, and then we are expected to respond. The community needs us to respond. Sometimes I feel like without all of the rulemaking in place and all of the support and a guided message for us as well, but in the end, you know, again, this is just one Board member speaking, I want to default to, let's just keep bringing the case to the community of what the reality is of our situation, and share as much information that we know to be accurate, and keep saying, you know, we're all going to have to be flexible and fluid, because I learned things last night that, you know, I didn't know before. You know, one of them being there's a lot of question of, well, I've already been vaccinated, you know, so I probably have antibodies, and antibodies are better than any vaccination, you know, even with the new variants that are probably going to continuously come out for the next 10 years, who knows? And what I learned last night was, it's probably a good idea to go to your healthcare provider and get an order to get antibody tested, and there's a certain one that it's called, and I'm not going to name it, because that's for a medical professional to do, and even then, you might have antibodies against parts of the spike protein, but not the pads of the spike protein. I mean, it gets really molecular. And, you know, what they were saying was, it's, right now, everyone to a certain extent is rolling the dice. We're all rolling the dice, and we're all trying to do what we can, I hope, to keep ourselves and our families healthy. But this type of information is coming out so quickly, is changing so quickly, and I think that we want to be as transparent as we can be without jumping the gun, because, you know, for better or worse, people are going to Facebook for their information. And some of it is accurate, some of it is wildly distorted, and it's hard to tease out, you know, where the real information is coming from. So while I'm all about providing access, you know, let's face it, a lot of our families are out in outline communities, it's very difficult for them, you know, to get to town and they would like to. I was at a meeting yesterday, and they had a vaccination booth right there. People could avail themselves of it if they wanted to, but it was there and available, you know, in the community. So if it's there and it's available and it's free, then you have a decision to make, each individual.
Well, Madam Chair, Board, good morning to all of you.
Morning.
I had actually been talking with the superintendent about this same thing several weeks ago. I do think that we need to make the access available within our schools. Some of us may remember getting vaccinations at school when we were kids. So I do, I do agree with that. My concern with this is that it goes back to kind of what Ms. Campbell was talking about, the messaging and making sure that whatever messaging that comes out behind this, that we as a district specifically state that we're not as a district mandating vaccinations, we are just providing access to the vaccinations, and so that folk will know that it's there. I think that messaging has to be clear and concise. I think individually, all of us may encourage or not encourage people to get vaccinations, those are individual preferences. But however, I think as a district, people tend to associate it with us as saying, you have to be mandated, you have to have the vaccination. And that's not what we're saying. We're saying we want to provide a service to the community for those who may not have the ability to get to where the shots are. So I'm in agreement with that. I heard what Ms. Campbell was saying about asking Ms. Simmons to put the thing out on the site. I just have one concern with that, and I agree that that information needs to be out there, but I'm not thinking, I'm thinking it should be more of us not her posting that information. I'm thinking because it changes so fast. I mean, I was on the call yesterday, and things, I was hearing some stuff yesterday that changed from last week. I think I'd rather see a link to something versus us having that document out there saying this is what it is, because it does change, and that link should go to an updated place where it's always constantly updated. And therefore, people won't hold us accountable for what we're putting on our site. We just provide the link to that site. That's just my suggestion.
I agree. I agree with everyone else. I think it's a good idea, or I'm not against us hosting, but not promoting, if that makes sense.
Yes.
And I do believe, like, a few years back, I remember our seventh graders coming to school and not having their vaccines, and we tried to get vaccines then, so they wouldn't miss a day of school.
Right.
And I can't remember the exact reason, but I know there was legally reasons too, I believe, Mr. Biennello and stuff, so I know for certain that it would not be during school hours, so, yeah.
And if I may, to your comments, and Board Member Cummings and Vice Chair King, the language, in my opinion, comes from the Department of Health. We are the conduit of that, but that, the language and the request and the information is their letterhead, their document. So I think, just like we did before with sharing the link, if you want to get vaccinated, here are the partners and that, we pass that through, but we are simply the host and certainly don't want to step in any mandate or any expectation, but that it would be their language.
Because we've done them at schools. We dated at Reddick all year, and we did it at our school. But we definitely knew that it wasn't for the students at that time, it was not, it was for the community. So I think, I'm in agreement with you guys, that language needs to be that we're not mandating them as a district.
Right. And also too, you know, again, being proactive with your health is a really important component of this, and I don't, and if, so we're going to be a conduit and for these services, then I would like to encourage them as well to, you know, in my mind, I'm seeing like a COVID care package, you know? They can include some things that are known to be helpful, and so...
And that takes us to, like, and I don't know, because I haven't been in the system in a while, but like Laura Lingel, many years ago, used to have a class that you could take and get points for, and it was basically like wellness and healthness, and it would talk about the different aspects, whether it be your sleep, and stress, and food, and stuff like that. You know, maybe just to revisit, because, you know, Marion County, we know, I believe we're pretty high up there for even having people that are obese or not living those healthy lifestyles.
Diabetes.
And diabetic, and stuff like that. So maybe we could get Laura to do something like that. And there's also programs out there too, that I know, for example, even like Weight Watchers, that our insurance used to pay for, and stuff like that. I think it was just for one year, so when that quit, but maybe we could even look into that, because I've had people say that, you know, after that year's up, they couldn't attend that. But there's ways for us as a community or a school to promote being healthy, and...
Getting your mammogram.
We're getting that.
And the hospital district does have that app, the AMP app.
Yes.
That actually can give you workout tips and all those kinds of, I mean, I think there's, we have partners, just like you mentioned, Laura Lingel and others, I think that's a great idea for us to put together some kind of little healthy you packet, so that we aren't just promoting one aspect of health whenever we're, we can promote being healthy at this partnership site that we're going to provide for these.
Great suggestions, and with the restructure of that Health and Wellness Department, those are things that we're trying to bring all those resources together, so I'll check on that. So thank you for that.
Yeah. And like have initiatives, like maybe even schools, like they could be initiatives or just something just to be healthy, you know, and take the focus off.
Was it sit for 60, walk for five, or, you know, we've had a lot of different initiatives in the past, and last year we did one targeted with our bus driver population, because they're in a sedentary job, obviously it's stressful. And it was in partnership with Laura Lingel and the hospital district, and they, at the end of each session, they got $15 worth of, like, phytonutrient vegetables and fruits and all kinds of things. And I sat in on one of them towards the end, well, it was the last one, when they had their graduation and they got their certificates, and I think it made a difference, you know? And that's the reality of the hard work that we all have to do to try to stay healthy under pretty extraordinarily stressful times. But it all helps, and again, what I heard last night was the folks that tend not to survive are the ones that wait too long to get treatment, are the ones that have underlying health conditions, and this is what, it's like the final nail, you know? And we have healthy people that obviously have gotten it and succumbed, those are more of the outliers. But, and I'm just sharing information that was shared to me at a physician's symposium last night. I am not a doctor, but I went there to hear information from a variety of doctors, both in our community and outside our community, so it was very interesting.
Thank you for the feedback. So my final item for the briefing this morning is to go over at a high level the draft for the strategic plan. So moving on to our core work and our business, and you will see in your handout marked draft, I'm going to go over this at a very, again, a very high level. This is really an excerpt. You'll see and hear a table of contents, but the pages are not numbered, because essentially what we've done is we've created a shell from all of the work that's happened from the beginning. So taking you back to the beginning, where we had our master board training, and we talked about the data, and we talked about the feedback provided from the listening tour that I did, and the ongoing feedback, we looked at creating those pillars, and we looked at the vision statement. So all of that work started there and has continued, and has come together with these metrics and strategies. And so the plan will be, as we are fine tuning some of those data points, I'm going to walk you through a few things, and what I'd like for you to do with the document I've provided to you as a draft, is to make notes on it, and then provide that back to me, because those, as you all know, and you're on those calls, you're having those revision conversations for the pillars that you're individually supporting, so that collectively we have a purpose and a plan and a roadmap. So the vision, helping every student succeed, and if you remember, that came about from our conversations as a leadership team, with what do we want it to be, something that everyone can understand, that's everyone's role in our district, that we are all helping every student succeed, regardless of whether you are in our custodial team, in transportation, you're a teacher, you're a paraprofessional, a board member, superintendent, whoever you are, whatever your role is, that we're all helping students succeed. And so that has been revised in here, along with our mission. Together with families in the community, Marion County Public Schools creates diverse and enriching pathways for all students to achieve intellectual and personal excellence, which speaks to all of the feedback and conversations about helping every child from the moment they step foot with us in the early grades through past graduation, that they are prepared to excel, that they're excelling at every moment with us, and that we're helping them reach their goals, whatever they are, and enriching their pathway. I would like to talk about and review the beliefs that we have and our core foundations. We believe high expectations, trusting relationships, transparent communication, responsibility and accountability, continuous improvement, acceleration, and innovation are the foundation for our success. And if you remember, we've spent quite a bit of time talking about what this is, what do we hold true, and what are we committed to providing? So you will see these woven through those metrics and those strategies. And you'll see some here, some background that we're working on, and defining and sharing with the public who we are and where we're going. So I'd like to take you to then those goals. We have the five goals, which we've talked about, and we've shared already with our team. Goal one is student success, increasing student achievement, opportunities, access, and equity. Goal two, safe and positive learning and working environment, providing a safe and supportive learning and working environment for all, our students and our team, our staff, that it's important to provide that for everyone. Goal three, talent management, ensuring all students have access to highly effective and diverse teachers, administrators, and support staff. This is also about not just the access to that, but investing in our team. Goal four, fiscal and operational efficiency, ensure operational effectiveness and efficiency of resources in alignment with strategic priorities, that we are really good stewards of public funds, and we're accountable and effective in how we align all of our resources, regardless of whether they're general funds, they're grant funds, that we are efficient and effective, and that we provide true accountability around those measures. And goal five, community engagement and communications, increase dialogue, partnerships, and collaboration in order to meet stakeholder needs and productively engage them in our successes. And so this speaks to, we know that communications, and we've talked about this, communication is woven throughout our plan and throughout our work, but we need to make sure to highlight how important it is, and we've spent a lot of time talking about this during the pandemic, that it's important that we improve our internal communications, but our internal, I'm sorry, our communication with our community at large as well, our parents, our community leaders, and that we enhance that. So you can go through and see each of the goals, the metrics that we have established so far in those core areas, that we've talked a lot about, tier one instruction, early childhood opportunities and access, enhancing our vocational and career and technical opportunities. You will see that we are addressing the chronic absenteeism that we've talked a lot about, and how are we doing that? We have great things already in place, but how else can we expand those opportunities? Reducing alternative placements for students. When we look at data and we see that there's patterns in our students' lives, how do we intervene and address those and work collectively as a community to reduce that, so our students can be in school to learn and be safe? You will see the investment with the safety requirements, which again, we have to work on the school hardening, the psychological and emotional safety, but also the physical safety. And then talent management, talked about, we've talked about the recruitment, which is critical, but we also invested in retention. We have to work on providing access opportunities to support our... We have to work on providing access opportunities to support our, our, our family, our team members and their learning, and how do we work on retention? And what does that look like to recognize and value everyone's role and their contribution to Marion County? And then fiscal and operational efficiency. What's really going to be important here that we've talked about is creating key performance indicators, that we don't just think, let's try this and wonder if it works, but that we provide measures and indicators for how we're being efficient and where we need to adjust. So we will put metrics, and you'll see the school, school lunch participation, because we know that students, to your point, Chair Thrower earlier, need to be healthy and well to learn. And working on access, we've talked a lot through the pandemic about access to learning remotely, internet. It's great that we have Chromebooks and that we have hotspots, but if we don't have the bandwidth and the ability for them to access internet, then nothing works. So we have to work with our community to do that, and we've already started that process. And then finally, I talked about, again, the overarching goal five is looking at how are we doing? How do we know how we're doing? What is, what is the feedback from our community? What can we do to be better? And how do we establish some parameters around that? And a lot of that comes from the communication, investing in training and providing stellar customer service among our district and to our, our families in the community, and engaging and enhancing partnerships, which, again, you heard Lauren DeBitt come forward with, with that new role, and how do we really engage and, and solidify some of those partnerships and for the benefit of our district and, and most importantly, our students? And so that is a very high level overview. So again, this is just an excerpt of some of those pages that we have. We will bring this back in its entirety with all of the detailed strategies. So I invite you again to take your time to digest the metrics, make some notes on those strategies, those high level strategies underneath. If there's anything that you have concern about, if you will share that. But it's important that we are able to bring this forward. My hope and my goal would be for next month. So as you're finalizing your conversations with your, with your calls, and I also want to just say to the board and to say publicly, that when the final plan is approved, it's important to remember that it's a fluid plan, much like a school improvement plan at our schools. While it may be written in ink, it's flexible. And as changes come and as challenges come, that we adapt to what the need is. It's not fixed. And so I think that's really the most important piece, is that we will adapt. We will also be bringing forward a monitoring plan. It is my expectation that we are going to follow a timeline, and we will be providing regular periodic updates on all of the metrics and the strategies to the board throughout each year, so that everyone will get to see where we are, what, what marks we're meeting and where we need to adjust. So we'll be very public about that. So a lot of information, very high level, but I'm happy to answer any initial questions that you have.
I think it's great to see it all condensed and, and taking shape. There's been a lot of strategy sessions on the strategic plan, so it's, it's a good feeling to, to see it having formalized, you know, to this point, at least a formal draft.
Yes.
Which is really good. So thank you very much for that. Anyone else? All right, I guess we have some homework.
No, I was already jotting notes, so I'm, I'm excited. I concur at 100%. Dr. Gullett knows I bring this up all the time. I can't wait to get this. I'm ready to get going on our, on the initiative that I know each board member is assigned to a different initiative, and I'm, I'm ready to get going on it, so I'm really excited.
Fun to check off our progress as we go. All right, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes my briefing for this morning. Thank you.
Okay. We will move on to discussing resolution 21-08, after which there will be an opportunity for public comment. Attorney Powers.
Good morning, Chair Thrower.
Good morning.
Hey, I have relied on our previous resolutions, along with previous board policy 8.9, with Governor DeSantis' executive order 21-175, administrative code 6AER21-02, to use the language together in order to draft a proper resolution for our purposes, and use the guidance and input that was given during our meeting here just the other day. I have incorporated a draft resolution. As of even this morning, I made a couple of minor changes to my draft, and I'm going to submit that for our discussion and review. It's currently, Mr. Christian's bringing it up on our screen here as well. This is the proposed resolution. Now, the changes that I have most recently made were two, they were rather minor changes. One was at the very end, and that was regarding the data and graphics that we wanted to put in there regarding the county view of the data for total positivity rate. That is a document that is a zoomable document and a searchable document and a document that is updated regularly. So putting in a snapshot, I did not feel was quite as appropriate as putting in the direct link, which will allow for anyone to access that information at any time with current numbers. And that is covid.cdc.gov/covid-data-tracker and hashtag county-view. And that's, that was in there in place of a static graphic. Secondly, I did modify from my first draft, there had been a section which I indicated, whereas school settings are a source of community, community spread of COVID, there is some debate about that, whether schools are actually a source. But what I had placed in instead was, school settings are a potential source of community, community spread of COVID. That clarifies that we're not seeing numbers which identify schools as, you know, the, a primary source of COVID spread, because those have not been supported to date. I had also weighed the possibility of removing a section regarding promotion of vaccines, because we're, we're not in the business of promoting vaccines. However, I would seek the board's guidance here, because we did have, the section that I put is in the whereas clause, it's the second, third, fourth whereas clause, fifth, sorry, is a factual statement that comes from CDC guidance, factual statement that it, it's factual that this is what the CDC says. In accordance with CDC guidance, properly wearing facial coverings, physical distancing and promoting vaccinations for eligible students and employees are key strategies that mitigate, mitigate against the spread of COVID. It's factual in the sense that that is the CDC's guideline and recommendation. As to whether each of those statements within themselves are true, that's internally not something that I had considered one way or the other. However, it's, this is a background statement. If we left it in, I think we're perfectly valid. We're not indicating that we are promoting it. We're indicating the CDC indicates each of these things. The follow-up statement to that is that, is as to one of those CDC recommendations, and that is as to properly wearing facial coverings. What we have said in the second half of that paragraph is that it is the intention of the school board, in accordance with existing Florida law, that parents, guardians may opt out their student from wearing a mask or face covering through parent guardian access in Skyward, by parent guardian handwritten note, or by a signed parent guardian permission slip provided at any school. So if the board wishes for me to make a change here, the change that I would make would be to delete the first sentence, the whereas provision, but I do not think that doing, not removing it causes us any consternation. It's not putting us on the hook for, or saying that we are actively promoting vaccinations. It's just outlining sort of the backstory of why we are where we're here. So, sorry, go ahead.
If I may, because what we are doing is in accordance with one specific CDC guidance, would it be possible for us to simply say, in accordance with CDC guidance regarding properly wearing facial coverings, it is the intention of the school board, and remove all the rest of the physical? Because we also don't highlight that we are going to be having physical distancing in our schools, and vaccinations are not required. And because we're not addressing the other two elements of CDC guidance, we are only addressing one, would it be proper for us to remove the other two strategies in this whereas?
Let me answer that if we were to do so, I would leave in physical distancing, as the rest of the resolution does address physical distancing in addition to facial coverings.
Okay.
Well, let me ask a question. If this is, this is language from the CDC, why are we messing with? It's not, it's not our language. It came, it came from CDC, right?
Correct.
And we're being specific about what we're talking about. We're talking about masks. We weren't talking about social, physical distancing or, or any type of promotion. This is just saying, this is what CDC recommends. Personally, I don't see a need to change it at all, because it's not us. It's not saying the Marion County School District promotes vaccinations. It's just saying under the CDC guidance. So it just seems like we're, we're, we would be doctoring their statement and changing what, it just, it doesn't make sense to me to change it. I'm, I'm not understanding that part.
Yes, unlike with the, where there is a phrase that we used in the previous paragraph saying that school settings are a source of community spread versus schools are, our school settings are a potential source of community spread, that isn't, since it's not attributed specifically to the CDC or any other agency with that specific statement, I believe that it is appropriate for us to modify that one. As to this, my impression would be that we either leave in that statement, which I think is innocuous, it doesn't put us on the hook for having said, this is our belief or policy, but on the other, it's, it's the, it's CDC guidance. Or simply remove it and begin simply with the intention of the school board in accordance with existing Florida law. Whereas statements in legal documents are sent, essentially set there to give a background of what it is that this resolution is speaking to. If 100 years from now, somebody didn't know anything whatsoever about COVID or what we were experiencing or anything else, just as we have largely forgotten things like the Spanish flu, this whereas document would provide them a basis for why people are making decisions as, and what people are saying about it. So it's informational, but it doesn't, it's not attributable to us. I, from a legal perspective, we may leave it out, or we may include it. I would feel less comfortable with removing portions of it, because it then does appear, I think that's probably a valid word, doctored, as though we are picking and choosing among them, which is a decision in itself.
It, it looks like it's background, it's, when I look at that, when I look at that part of it, I see it as a reference statement, basically, to where I would get the information from. If I saw this, if I was saying, where, where did the school board come up with this idea? I would look to CDC guidance, and I would see that what else that they have there is attached, is face, facial coverings, physical distancing, promoting vaccinations, those are things that CDC are saying. I just, I, I see it as background information, not as something that we're promoting as a district.
I see it as a promotion. I think we should take that. Because when I look at that and I see that, it's, it's saying that we're promoting it. And I just heard the board say, we're not promoting, that we're going to host, but we're not promoting.
That's half hour.
Right. And so I look at it as promotion, so I would like to see that removed.
And I'm looking at the, the title and matching it up to the content. And the title is, "The Resolution of the School Board of Marion County, Florida Mandating Face Coverings With a Student Opt-Out Provision." And that's what this is. So it appears to me that it would make sense under that whereas, that we're talking about one, two, three, four, the fifth one down, that we consider starting it with, it is the intention of the school board, in accordance with existing Florida law, that parents, guardians may opt out their student from where, because that's really what we're talking about.
So then don't doctor it, take it all the way out.
Right.
But don't doctor it.
Right.
No, initially, they were talking about changing certain words. If that's CDC's words, don't change someone's statement, just take it out.
Right, and that certainly was not my intention to attempt to modify bits and pieces, so.
Right.
Right, I, I would be in for all in or all out, so.
I believe you have consensus, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Also, I made some notes that, that do, well, they, they touch on the resolution as something that we had discussed just a few moments ago. And that was as to current vaccine stuff that we do in schools. It's not really an issue for the resolution, but I can just speak to the fact that we do have hepatitis B vaccines, which are provided, because I've been working on those, on those, some of those documents. And we have MaxVax, where we do influenza and T-DAP vaccines to students with signed consent. Ms. Simmons for the future, if the board wishes to find more information about what our current vaccine things are non-COVID, I, that would be whom we would reach out to most likely, regarding what the superintendent was indicating earlier. Doesn't specifically have to do with the resolution, so I'll leave it at that, but that's, that, I was making notes, because I thought it might be something we brought up about whether we were promoting or not. Every, is everyone okay with my, my edit of schools being a potential source of community spread of COVID in the whereas section immediately prior?
Right. I'm okay with that.
Which paragraph is that?
That's 1, 2, 3, 4, fourth paragraph. The fourth whereas paragraph, right.
The original draft said that they were, they were.
Right. It said, "School settings are a source of community spread," and I've modified that to say, "School settings are a potential source of community spread."
Hard to say that, only having been in school a few days.
Right.
Right, right. I did add in, under section four, exceptions. Most of these exceptions come from our prior resolutions and policies. I added in a few things at the board's, at the board's direction, which included, let's see, item G now, I wanted to check the wording of that with the board. Students engaged in curriculum-related performing arts, including but not limited to woodwind or brass instruments, choir singers, comedians, magicians, open mic and karaoke performers and theater or movie performers, provided that social distancing is observed to the greatest extent practical. That's language that was parsed from two other boards, just covering all of the entertainment arts and things like that that we do.
Right, because there was some confusion about that last year. So that's good to have that in there. I didn't see anything about, maybe I just missed it, but about specifically saying recess, you know, outdoors, things like that.
Yes.
B, okay, persons outdoors, and maybe we could just put example recess, because that was a big, that was a big deal last year. And, and it was hard to see kids running around in the heat, you know, with their masks still on, when it really wasn't based on the evidence we have so far, that that was a, a big opportunity for spread.
So B covers anyone outdoors and/or if they're observing social distancing.
Okay.
But shall I place after outdoors, a modifier that says, with an example, that says, parenthetically, EG, recess PE? Because I don't want it to be limited to those activities either, because essentially, if someone's also in a hallway walking, or I'm sorry, outside of, walking from one class to another outside of campus, they're not at recess, but they would be still exempt.
But they're probably not, well, yes, no, every, sorry.
They may be socially distanced, they may not be, you know. We just don't know. But yes, maybe including but not limited to.
Okay, very good.
So outside, so I'm just thinking about, I see, hold on. So where they walk out of that one building, going to the cafeteria, as, and they're going to lunch, so are they masked or unmasked?
Well, if, there's the social distancing thing, because I was at O'Callaghan Charter Middle School yesterday, when they changed classes, they go out one door and then down the little walkway out in front of Church of Hope, you know, over in that area, and then back in. And what I observed was that the ones, you know, that were wearing masks kept them on. And what I observed was that the ones, you know, that were wearing masks kept them on. Because they were like one behind the other, they were not distanced. So, you know.
That's what I'm thinking too.
Well, and B.
School like that. When they go from like, um, H Street to their cafeteria, O.C.O.L.A. to their cafeteria, are they, they're not social distanced, they're walking down the line. I'm just asking.
And Reverend Cummings, B references persons outdoors and/or observing social distancing, not necessarily the two are together within what we say. Thus, the way that I've written this, based on my understanding of what the board would say, and we may need to revisit if we do, is that essentially if there's not a ceiling over your head, you don't have to social distance, if you're not inside a building. You don't have to wear a mask. Now, if we wish that to be altered, then it becomes more of a judgment call that they still have to social distance everywhere, even outdoors. So I, I'll need some clarification as to whether I'm going to modify that. I think the, the way that I've written it is more of a bright line rule. If you're outdoors, masks are not required. If you are indoors, they are required unless you make, can socially distance properly.
Dr. Gollum?
Would it be, thank you, Madam Chair. Would it be appropriate to separate these out? Because I'm going to propose an example of something we discussed last year was car line. So if you say outdoors, outdoors is outdoors. So would it be, would it provide more clarification if we separated them out to say outdoors and a separate line is talking about social distancing? Because what I hear is outdoors is outdoors, regardless of social distancing. Does that, does that make it clear?
And that.
These two seem to be interacting with each other.
Right. And that's the way that I had intentionally written it, given guidance of the board there, that I may have misunderstood. So the way that it's written currently is, again, outdoors versus, is outdoors, period. We did have a discussion prior, previously about in car line type situations, or as people are pouring out of an auditorium, there's a number of people. Does that mean that when they come out, they can immediately pull off the mask or not? You're going to get into a bunch of individual judgment calls there if we say there's, it's outdoors plus social distancing. So I just need guidance as to what, what it is. And I can then parse them out into separate paragraphs, but it'll be the board's decision as to which we are actually saying.
Because then it also.
Different schools may run things differently as to how they choose to.
Well, then it'll, if we enforce outdoor, if social distance, then it also gets into athletic events that start this evening, if not already started, and, and all of those kinds of, of things like that. So I heard this board say outdoors is outdoors, but I don't know if that has changed since Monday.
And also too, what was presented to us the other day is that, you know, where the, where is the opportunity for the highest chance of, you know,
It's in the classroom.
It's in the classroom, it's inside, it's sustained contact of 15 minutes or more. So transition, you know, on a campus outside, yeah. The more definite we can be, the better, because we're not getting a whole lot of definition otherwise.
Well, and those, those type of interactions, ideally even probably car line, but definitely, definitely for situations like coming out of the auditorium or something, those would be fleeting or in passing. So it would be.
It's transition in two minutes.
Right, right.
Yeah, people are moving, they're not sitting there.
People are moving and, yeah.
In car line, it's hot. Like today, I think their heat index is over 100 degrees. There's just.
And last year, they were spreading them out towards the end as best they could, because we relaxed the.
People were getting sick, so I think.
And that may be a procedural thing for, and I think we've already done this with superintendent staff, is a, that the encouragement of, of staff to social, to social distance students as much as possible in those environments.
Right.
The car line of two years ago may look quite a bit different than the car line of today.
Yes. A lot of schools have opened up second car lines in the back, you know, they just through looking around, like, oh, we could do a second car line in the back, which also helps parents, because you're not sitting there in the car line for a very, very, very long time.
My indication is that we may be able to simply leave this similar and probably break down B into two things, but nonetheless, make that a procedural thing, because we do have, I've placed in here a direction that the superintendent will direct. We're going to have it here, sorry. That, that the superintendent, here we go, the first page, bottom whereas paragraph. "Superintendent shall create procedures for imposing a face covering mandate for staff, visitors, and students, along with parent, guardian, opt-out process." And so these are, with the tweaking of these issues or fine points of issues, or something that certainly can be a flexible and fluid thing for the superintendent to do as, as we discover potential issues. If we choose not to modify outdoors within the policy or within the resolution itself.
I don't think we should modify it, I think we should just leave it.
I, I'm fine with that one the way it is. But board, I, I do just want to have a, a point of clarification and I guess a point of concern a bit. The exception C, talking about the medical exception, basically for employees, and then also referencing down to the enforcement and the penalty for employees that would result in insubordination, et cetera. I, I have some real concern about that language, frankly. Because we have given students the opportunity through a parent and an adult, their adult guardian, to opt them out, yet we are requiring our employees to not only get a physician note, but it must say that wearing a face covering would cause impairment? I, I'm not comfortable with that language. This is just Board Member Campbell speaking. I'm not comfortable with that language, and the primary reason is this. I'll use my own personal health. As everyone knows who has read the Star Banner in recent times, I was COVID positive the end of July. And I know that I, because I met with my physician yesterday, that I have antibodies for the next 90 days, at least, if not six months or longer, and I will be checking for that. Additionally, I am not able to transmit. I am not able to carry COVID. I can't get it, I can't carry it. And I am not a danger if I don't have a face covering on. So there potentially would be additional employees that also are in that same scenario. And to think that we would have an employee who has just come off of a COVID quarantine, knowing the exact same scenario that I am in, could potentially be an insubordination because they don't have a physician's note saying as such, that's concerning to me. And, and I'm not sure how we want to address that. I know we talked about it at length on Monday, but before this is signed, I would feel much more comfortable if we had additional conversation.
Yeah, I had that on there too. I do not think any of our employees should be written up for insubordination or penalized for something like this. I, that's just not the message I want to send or give. I think we've heard it several times, even though it sounds silly, we are not the mask police, right? We are not here to police everybody who's wearing a mask, and they're not. Here's, we have our resolution. To me, it's highly encouraging, it's important. Another thing that has been brought up, and I think there's some confusion, that employees believe that they're having to provide a diagnosis of why they're not wearing their mask. That is not the business of the school board. And that, there shouldn't be any documentation of what their health issues are, and it should not be documented anywhere. And I think there's been a little bit of confusion with that. And I think what the board is looking for, or what I've been telling people, is someone, your physician could just say, please excuse, whatever, no more. It's not our business of what your health reasons are, so.
I agree with you. I don't think.
Yes, they do.
I don't think, I don't think we ever was, the intent has never been that we, that a staff member should have to tell us what their medical issue is.
Right, but interpretation and probably the wording.
Violate HIPAA.
And there's confusion because.
The way this is worded says that if it would cause impairment, and that absolutely is going to have to be, a physician is going to have to say something specific about your medical condition, that a mask causes impairment, and that is getting into.
Like you have a deviated septum.
Absolutely, thank you.
I'm trying to breathe here, people.
But you.
Dr. Gollum? Thank you. So I appreciate this conversation. I think we do need some clarity and direction from the board on this, because, so is it my understanding that the board still wants and requires that staff have something from a physician? Because that will require all of our staff who are not going to wear a face covering to go to their physician and get something? That's.
You know, I'm thinking about real world application of all of this. And there has been so much vagueness from the beginning, like, you know, parents are supposed to have the opportunity to opt their kids out unless, okay, so what does that really mean? In, in the real world of a school setting? How do we know that, that parents have given their children the opportunity to opt out? Because not every child, we have kids that are three years old, all the way up to 22. Some of them can't even talk. So, so how do we know, you know, who's opted out, who hasn't? And as far as the employees are concerned, I think that we have an obligation as adults to do everything we can to keep our schools open. We are trying to walk that line, including providing disposable masks, including recognizing where this virus has the most potential to spread and where it doesn't. Last year, people were so glad to get back into school, nobody really squawked about the mask mandate. They were like, if it gets my kid back in school, they are going. And, but it's, but it's different this year. And I don't know if it's because it's become so politicized, or memories are short, or there, and there's more health data out there that, you know, poorly worn, dirty masks, I mean, I think that's common sense to me. That's just not a good idea. So what we're trying to do is provide the, the types of masks that provide some protection, a tool in the arsenal that can be changed and that are expected to be changed. And it's kind of like when you take a job anywhere and you're expected to wear steel-toed boots or safety glasses, you know? Are, are masks the, the same thing? You know? Not everyone agrees on that, but I would like to think as a board, we all agree that we want to encourage the people whose checks we are signing every single week, which are, or two weeks, which are the same people that we paid, whether they worked or not, which are the same people that we just gave a thousand dollar bonus to, which are the same people that we've given extra leave to, which are the same people that we've done a lot to try to take care of them when other people's jobs just went away. And so we need everyone's support. And, and if you are a person, such as myself, that really struggles with, with wearing a mask, well, you know, we're trying to put provisions in place so that you don't feel like you're masked up all day with a foot to the back of your head and someone pulling on the back of it. So there's, everybody wants it black or white. This, this is not that situation, because we're trying to help everybody. And by extension, help the kids so that they can stay in school and get their education. So I, I do not want to see our employees penalized, but I do want to see them encouraged, really encouraged. Sometimes, you know, when you need help, you have to ask. And you have to appeal to something in somebody that makes them want to say, sure, pick me, I will help. And if you have a medical condition or difficulty, whatever it is, then we need to be understanding of that, because that is the real world. But it's also the real world that one state over, north of us, they're closing schools. And right now, we do not have, it has not been funded to us to do MCPS online. So we don't have the option yet. Maybe we'll have the option next week, where the state will say, we'll reinstitute the funding for the innovative learning model, otherwise known as MCPS online, but we don't have that yet. What we have is the ability, all of us, to come together, to turn this tide, to keep our kids in school, calm things down, and get back to education. So whatever that takes is what I will sign.
I think staff should wear the mask. I'm just, they can, I think we provide the provision for them to be able to, to not, and that's just going to the doctor and getting a note.
All right, then, then we need to change that line.
Ma'am, let me, let me finish. I think as leaders, we should lead from the front and not the back. And when you lead from the front, you provide the example for those who are following you. We're not, we're not asking them to do anything other than just provide a note from the doctor. We're not asking the doctor to put a diagnosis out there, I don't think. If that says put a diagnosis, then we need to change that. If it doesn't say put a diagnosis, we're just saying a doctor's note. I, I don't, I don't want to violate anyone's HIPAA or privacy or anything like that. But I don't see how this is saying that it provides a, make me see the diagnosis part of it.
The word impairment is a diagnosis.
Where?
So it, C, persons for whom a face covering would cause impairment due to an existing health condition. That is what the physician has to write on their note.
All the physicians, it says this person has a condition.
Then we need to remove that entire part to just say, persons with a physician's note can be excluded.
That's fine. I'm just saying that I think we need to lead from the front, and we need to quit. I think we're trying to, I, I, I'm hoping, I'm, I'm looking at this in a different way, that we're trying to put something in place to, and it's, again, we said it's temporary. We said it's going to be till we get the numbers down. We, we're putting that in the documentation. We're not trying to put anything in there permanently. We want to make sure that folk are safe, folk are doing what they need to do. I'm willing to, 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 to change stuff like that, but I think we still need to lead from the front. I think we need to make sure that.
Absolutely.
That we're doing the right thing, again.
All right, so what is, what exactly, in terms of changing to the statement, are you proposing, Board Member Campbell?
I didn't wordsmith it yet, but something to the effect that a persons with a physician's note may be excluded from, or, you know, may be excluded from this resolution.
Persons for whom, okay.
Something to that, I mean, just a simple statement, so it doesn't indicate what that physician's note needs to say. It just needs to say, please opt out, this person, signed, doctor whomever.
That's, that gets real.
Beyond that, you're asking what their medical.
Not really.
Condition is.
The, the doctor can say the person has a condition that, that wearing a mask would impede them. That's it. That's not telling, that's not saying what the condition is. And impairment could be, I'm missing a toe.
How about preclude them? How about preclude them? That they have, that, that, I'm not sure how we would write it in there. But, but I, I tend to agree with Board Member Campbell on, on this one. You know, if a, if a staff member is going to go to the extent to get a physician's note, then I want to err on the side of protecting their personal privacy rights, I really do. And, you know, I don't know what else it's going to take to bring this to the community that we are struggling. You know, it, those are facts, 100% facts. We are struggling, so we need everyone's help. So whatever that takes, and we're trying to build in some flexibility here to protect people's personal privacy rights, to protect their medical rights. But can we all please agree that having our kids in school is what we want? Can we at least agree on that? Because I don't see us agreeing on a whole lot else. And it's, it's going to create more and more chaos in our system and, and move us further, further away from our mission, which is making sure each child succeeds. So I feel like if somebody's going to, if one of our employees is going to go to the trouble to get a note from their doctor, that it doesn't have to be specific, because then who's going to judge whether it was specific enough? I, I don't want to go down that trail.
I've never said that it needs to be specific.
Impairment, whatever.
All the doctors that say is, they have a condition that wearing a mask prohibits. That's simple, that's not asking for a diagnosis, that's not asking for anything specific, other than I'd rather for the doctor to say that they can't wear a mask. Versus, I got. other than I'd rather for the doctor to say that they can't wear a mask versus I got an ingrown toenail, that's an impairment. And I don't, I'm going to the doctor to get a note because I, I got an ingrown toenail. Come on, y'all.
On your size 12 foot.
On my size 12 foot, yes.
We've been talking about your feet.
You're right.
You've been talking about your feet a lot.
I'm, I'm serious. That, I mean, common sense. I agree with you. We want to keep people in school. But let's not try to poke holes in this thing so that we don't have anything.
Okay, let's ask our attorney, since we have one. What would be the least restrictive statement that would still accomplish what we're trying to accomplish here, which is to encourage all staff to help us?
Least restrictive, first of all,
Help themselves.
Let me indicate HIPAA doesn't apply to us. We're not a hospital, clinic, chiropractor, nursing home, pharmacy. We're not, everyone that would be concerned about that, we have their medical privacy standards, which we have to meet, period. However, the fact is that when it comes to, when it comes to something that is, as in first part of C, it says persons for whom a face covering would cause impairment due to an existing health condition, without, without more, would not be violative of patient privacy. The question is, are we attempting to expand the number, the people who this exemption goes to? Or are we attempting to protect people's privacy? Or both? So what I think the intent, from what I heard the board talk about the other day, was that if, if we're going to have an employee exemption that is tied to a physician's note, then that physician's note, the whole purpose of a medical exemption is that, that a, there is indeed a valid medical exemption. Now, the language that I would suggest that is at least possibly restrictive would be for a doctor to indicate in a note that this person is medically exempt.
That's it.
And that way, it doesn't reference a condition. It doesn't represent, it doesn't reference causing impairment. It doesn't, you know, now, we can still say persons for whom a face covering would cause impairment due to an existing health condition. And that's not what we're asking for from them. But essentially, I can word this to indicate simply that this exception requires a physician's note that said individual is medically exempt. Would that meet everyone's approval?
That's fine. As long as they're not having to say what their exemption is.
No, and I think that, I mean, I, I try to liken it back to existing, the way we do things now with, if, if a student is going to be tardy, for example, they have to have a doctor's note, or it's essentially an unexcused tardy. Or if they're checking out early, it's got to be for, you know, they have to have a doctor's note. What does a doctor's note have to say? I think we leave that pretty broad. I think it's simply that they had an appointment.
Right.
You know? But of course, if that, if that child had an appointment and that appointment was with a particular doctor, it might inadvertently reveal the reason for it. Because if it was a pediatric cardiologist, then you're kind of, that information's possibly out there. But I think that all we're asking for is some documentation of there being a appointment in that case. We're not asking for a diagnosis or anything like that. By indicating that the doctor, with, we've, we've placed a lot of emphasis on the relationship between doctor and patient in this. If the doctor is willing to indicate that his patient is medically exempt, then that's fine. What I would caution is that it is likely that we need to include another sentence, and I'll try to structure that while we're talking, about, that it be, you know, a licensed physician, because we're going to have, there, there's always the, the fact that people may have other healthcare providers who are not licensed physicians. And we're going to open a big boat of who it is can write a note, you know?
Well, we have nurse practitioners, we have PAs, you know, we have MDs, we have psychiatrists, you know, there are people that
Chiropractors, whom my, my understanding is we no longer allow chiropractors to do the, the physicals, or, or there had been some discussion of that.
Oh, really?
No, that may be true.
Even physicals?
That may not be true. But there's, there's situations, chiropractors can do school physicals in some instances, or have been in the past. There's some question about that. I don't know. So who do you want? Do you want the chiropractor to be able to write the note? Or, you know, do you want the homeopathic treatment coordinator? Or how do we want to define that? Licensed physician, I think generally covers it. There may however be situations in which a nurse practitioner is appropriate and
Right. What about licensed medical provider?
Or PA.
Licensed healthcare provider. Because you might be seeing a PA and never even seeing the
Right.
The MD. You might go to a doctor of chiropractic because your neck issues are affecting your sinuses, you know? So we could go down that rabbit hole all we want to. I think a licensed medical provider, or licensed healthcare provider. I don't know. What about you guys?
That's fine.
Licensed healthcare provider. Okay. And that, that may be a broad net, but it may be what we're looking for.
This is a broad issue.
Right.
And are we going to leave in the insubordination portion for our employees if they are in violation?
That I took from, that's not something new. We don't, we can do whatever the board wishes to do with it, obviously. But I took that from former board policy 8.90 and language of prior, prior resolutions, just because every resolution tends to, if you're, if you're limiting someone's, there needs to be some sort of enforcement provision as to what you may do. Now, it may be that, you know, we indicate that the superintendent in procedure may choose to have a progressive discipline schedule as to what, what she wishes to do with these. Just like we have for students, we've set a level one dress code violation, which is, you know, the same thing if they don't have the right color of their ID tags for kids going in, or they're, you know, something, something relatively minor. Now, I will point out, though, this may be, in order for this enforcement provision to be triggered, let me reiterate what I think the board must consider. And that is that an employee who's outdoors with, let's say this employee does not have a physician's note. If that employee is outdoors, they can still be unmasked, just like students. If that employee is in a position where that employee may socially distance, they can be unmasked, just like with students. If that employee is singing, you know, as part of a curriculum-related activity, or playing a musical instrument, or if that's, if that employee is doing any of these things that we've listed here, working with students in specialized programs that preclude the ability to wear a face covering, they're participating in eating or drinking, exercising, anything in which there's social distancing, it's not going to trigger this. It would have to literally be an employee who is in a concentrated, non-socially-distanced area without an otherwise exempt, medical exemption, who is choosing not to wear a mask. So if that employee has then been told not to, that the employee must wear a mask, then the insubordination would be, I think, the next step logically, if we're going to have any enforcement provision at all. So if we don't want that, we, that's certainly within the board's purview. I just don't know what we do then with a situation in which it may be violated, given that it's a pretty broad, you know, there's plenty of potential outs for someone here. Now, I will indicate that the, for, in the instance of a visitor to campus, we also have, there's essentially an enforcement provision for them as well. For a visitor to campus who, or a contractor, or someone on campus, vendor, someone who does not abide by this, they'll be asked to leave campus and removed if they don't. So, you know, that's, that's not what we do with our employees. But we have the same, the same requirements of, of outside people as well. So I don't know if, if we don't make, if we don't have that as the enforcement provision. I think that we could legally leave it to the superintendent and her staff to develop procedures as to what form of discipline, and if any, it would take. Employee counseling, or whatever it may be. I don't know. That's, that's
I mean,
You guys are, you guys are certainly able to dictate or, or, or defer the decision as to what this results in. I think, though, that some clarity is probably appropriate.
Of course, we understand, when this, all this started, we talked about grace and compassion, common sense. We're not trying to penalize or hurt our staff. I think if you put some, some type of language in there, superintendent, where it's progressive, some, and, and it starts at the lowest, the very, very lowest. You, you'll know somebody that's, that's doing it willfully, based on how the conversation, it could be just a verbal conversation, hey, you know, record of counsel, whatever. But most, most of our employees are, they're either going to comply, they're either going to get the note and opt out, or they're going to wear the mask, point blank. You know, they don't want anything in their jackets. They, they want to mitigate this thing down as well. So I think if you do progressive, I'm not, I'm not wanting to see someone just put insubordination in their file. To me, that's a serious infraction.
And just so you know, like, teachers last year were discuss, this was discussed during their evaluations.
Insubordination?
Yes. So that's why we have to be very careful, because every principal has a different set of standards and rules. And say you are my principal and saw me one time with my mask down, or my students, or something going on, and it comes evaluation time and I get you. And that's what, that, that did happen last year, that the concern I'm hearing is that there has
So
Been docked on evaluations.
In situations like that, does that employee have any recourse? I don't know. I'm asking. Because I think that's, I think that would be kind of petty.
Yep.
Thank you. I, again, I appreciate the conversation because I'm reminded that this is policy. So to Vice Chair King's point, I mean, if you put something in policy and you have folks that are expected to follow policy, the language is really important. So what I hear Attorney Powers suggesting, and I'm not the attorney, but that we're careful around that language. That's why I've been jumping in, asking clarification questions, because I have them, and I know our team will as well. So if we say, and I, I too, Board Member Cummings wrote progressive discipline, but for someone, it's a conversation. Well, and if they turn and say to me, you know, I haven't been able to get to the doctor yet, which is why I asked for that clarification. I, I have an appointment, but they're so busy
Yeah.
That I can't see anybody for three or four weeks. That's a reality. And so we certainly wouldn't want to put a staff member in a difficult spot of saying, you know, emotionally, physically, whatever it is, I don't feel comfortable that I'm able to wear this because I have other health conditions. And so we put them in a bad spot. And then I don't want us, I'm going to be very lately honest to say, then we're becoming the mask police again. Students and staff, but we're talking about staff right now. And I just don't want to put additional burdens on. And I too agree that we're all committed to doing, to doing this and protecting everyone. But, but the nuance is important, and the language is important, because they will follow that. Our team is very committed to following. So I, I raised a similar question. Thank you.
A suggestion might be, at least for placeholder purposes, and, and the fact is, I believe this may resolve the concerns that the board is mentioning now, would be to say, to modify Section B under Section 5, to state willful violations by employees may result in referral to school administration for progressive discipline.
A suggestion, idea
Or, let me amend. Willful violations by employees may result in
Would be to say
Progressive disciplinary action in accordance with employee discipline outlined in school board policies.
Willful violations by employees
6.37 and 6.38, this case.
May result
Or collective bargaining agreements between the unions and school board, whichever applies.
Referral to school administration.
That way, it's not specifically indicated infraction. It's not specifically indicating that it's a
Subordination.
Insubordination.
Right. Because it may not be.
Essentially is indicating that a, number one, have added the term willful violation. That makes it, that makes willful appear twice in this. Willful violation, not just a, you know,
Right.
Accidental violation. And then it is previously said willful refusal to comply with a direct order. But we're going to eliminate that section if, if you wish to do this. Thus, it would say willful violations by employees may result in disciplinary action, progressive disciplinary action in accordance with employee discipline outlined in school board policy and/or collective bargaining agreements. Does that, I mean, other than that, I can, I can try to lighten it further.
I, I understand the need for enforcement. I mean, if you're going to put in something, then you need to have some kind of
Mm-hmm. Otherwise, you don't have it.
I, I, right. I mean, what's the point? And I, I can understand that entirely. But to Ms. King's point, and I also have heard the same kinds of information from employees, this to me will then mean, just putting this in writing at all, this to me will mean, we will have some administrators, managers, et cetera, who will be adamantly enforcing this, and some that won't. And
And that's why it says may.
Right, right. So then that, what does that do for the employees under certain leaders and certain, I, I, I don't know the answer to that. But that's, that's what we will be experiencing.
I think there also needs to be something in there, or at least we need to be considering this element, that we are not, we are trying to get our employees to communicate with us about if they, if they feel that they, it's not in their best interest, you know, medically, emotionally, whatever, to, to communicate that. And I think the example was spot on about even getting into your healthcare provider. There's a lag right now. And, and we want to be, we want to be sensitive to that. And, and we also want to be willing to listen, because again, we're talking 54 different schools, right? And all of our employees, and everyone bosses differently. You know, we've all had bosses that have been more relaxed. We've all had bosses that have been more militant. But I don't think that should stray us from our ultimate goal, which is to keep our kids in school and keep our employees working. That's what we need. That's what we need. So I think that we're getting closer in, in our language.
Right now, what I have is willful violations by employees may lead to disciplinary action in accordance with employee discipline outlined in school board policy and/or collective bargaining agreements. I mean, that's a, that's pretty vanilla there, that willful violations by employees may lead to progressive disciplinary action. And I think that then does authorize a fair amount of discretion. That way, I don't have, I mean, to the degree that we trust our, our principals and administrators, it doesn't, it doesn't make them feel that they are to, that they, that they are forced into imposing some form of discipline. And the one that is outlined by board policy is insubordination. It simply indicates that they may, and they may do it via a progressive discipline schedule.
I'm, I'm good with that.
I am too. Okay. May we also, or shall we? In item C, then, where we're talking about violations by visitors, public, and individuals, may we also say failure to comply may result in persons removal? And I'm, just a random scenario, I don't know if this would ever be the case. But say we absolutely have to get that air conditioning fixed in that school, and we need somebody to get in to do it right now, and they are not going to have a mask on, or not wanting to, or whatever. What, what, we need to be able to have the option to weigh, is it more important that you have a face covering on, even though you may not even encounter a student? Or is it more important that we get that done?
To answer that question in part, the vendors that we have are, they have to abide by our policies. And we've got, even to be on campus, they by our policies. And we've got, even to be on campus, they have to be screened under the Jessica Lunsford Act and things like that. So I don't probably think that that particular issue is likely to be one. However, certainly, I can imagine, especially when it comes to visitor, maybe less so with a vendor, but where you may have a person who is asked to wear a face covering and they refuse. If we do say that we, that it will result in persons removal, then yes, to some degree, that may hamstring, if hamstring administration or Mr. McFadden or anyone else from looking into it and saying, okay, this person's particular issue, we choose to, you know, we're looking at this particular issue, and in this sense, this situation, it's not going to, you know, we believe that we're, we're within our rights to modify things. So I think that changing it from will to may doesn't hurt our ability to enforce it if it is chosen that we do so. However, it does add some level of discretion. Whenever you add discretion, you have people pointing at each other saying, but they did it this way. So we have to be somewhat cautious about that. But, you know, our staff are experienced in doing exactly that. But violations by visitors, public and individuals doing business with the district will result in the person being asked to wear a face covering. Failure to comply may result in persons removal from the school board's property. So...
May.
May.
Right. Okay. That's fine by me, if you guys are okay with that.
Yeah, it's kind of legislating for the outliers, but anything can happen in a public school system. We know this to be true.
Right. And, and this also doesn't, I think, put us on the hook to have an argument with each person who, I mean, it's simply if, if, if we have the op, we have the option to remove and it's discretionary with us.
Right. Yeah. They're going in to fix an air conditioner on the side of a building where they're going to be all by themselves, and it's kind of a moot point. And that's where social distancing would come in. They're going to be in the middle of a classroom with kids in it, and the kids can't be removed, and they're going to be in there for three hours, which I just don't see that as happening, but it could, who knows? That would be a different story.
And the only thing I may wish to add to this, now that I've, you guys have inspired me with finding it, all the, all the potential details that I might have left out, would be, when it comes to person being asked to wear a face covering, at that point, I think we've got a, it may be appropriate, we have defined face covering, face mask, face shield or covering, to include a uniform piece of material securely covers person's nose and mouth, remains affixed in place, whether store bought or homemade. This would sort of prevent, I think we've indicated in person must properly and securely cover their nose and mouth with a, one consistent with CDC guidelines. So do we want to say anything here or remain silent regarding the type of face covering that they must, they must wear or how they must wear it? So for example, if someone chooses not to wear the face covering properly, or if someone chooses to just throw a, you know, take a piece of cloth and hold it over their mouth, it's not in keeping with our definition. Are we going to, are we going to go any further with that? Or we just want to leave it as, as we are and see and define it and hope that people will, will see what we've done within our definition section?
Well, everybody had a lot of practice last year, you know.
And I don't think, and I think, Ms. Thrower, to your point, we've had this, these aren't brand new. These are, whether it's the discipline issues, the face covering and what, what we have required of people, I think that we worked out a lot of those issues before. So I would suggest that maybe I just withdraw that request that we further define it and leave it alone. If someone wishes to challenge, they certainly can.
I'm fine with you including Section 2 definitions. And then moving forward, anything referenced below, you know, go back to Section 2 if you want a definition of what that means. I don't think we need to re...
Understood.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Redo it over and over and over.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, I have my answers. And I believe that I will, are there any other sections regarding this potential resolution that, or this resolution that anyone would like to bring up or address?
Wonder we, wonder if are we expecting any additional rulemaking to come down from the state? Because as I continue to read the governor's order, it's really vague. You know, it's almost like it's being said, well, we're not going to mandate masks. But if you are going to mandate masks, then there has to be an opt out. I mean, which is it? And, and I'm just wondering if there's going to be any rulemaking sooner than later. Specifically, I know right now, at least, that we are on firm, on solid legal footing, correct? We haven't gotten a phone call from the state that we have to appear in front of the State Board of Education and, and be questioned about what we're doing. And I prefer to keep it that way. I also want to always keep what's best for our employees and our students in mind. And, and it is a very fine line to be walking right now. But I am confused at a gut level about this, and would really appreciate some rulemaking here, like a specific statement from the state that says, if parents choose to opt out, here is the process or procedure that they must do. Because right now, it doesn't look a whole lot different, that it makes it look like we're asking for lists of students to use for our own uses. And that's certainly not Nancy Thrower's intent, and I hope it's not anyone's intent. But that is people's concern because they're reading the resolution just like, or they're, they're reading the governor's order just like we are, and we're calling it a resolution. But yet, it's a resolution mandating face coverings when the governor said, well, we don't want to mandate face coverings, but we do want to give parents the opportunity to opt out. What?
Well, there was a previous resolution that...
Double talk.
It's double speak.
Yes. And as to when that legal clarification's going to come along, I can't tell you. I can tell you there are at least two active suits right now, which may, there are circuit court suits, so they may, they may be, provide guidance at least for the future, but likely would have to work their way through an appellate process once those happen, where parents are suing a school district for not mandating, and parents are suing for mandated, for terms of mandate. So I can't tell you what's, when we're going to get more information. There had been prior, in the previous executive orders, there were some things that were modified by subsequent executive orders, such that where we are now, I think this board has taken great pains to ensure, we're not thumbing our nose at any portion of law. We're not thumbing our nose at anyone's rights. We are attempting to weigh and carefully, well, to take seriously our duty to make sure that, that we are doing the best we can within the legal structure and framework we're provided. And I would say that as, as anything comes down with a resolution that we can modify and amend as needed, should further guidance or further, further resolutions come forward from the governor or from the CDC. One thing I can indicate Chair Thrower is that we have, throughout our documents, tried to reference things back to sources where those sources change frequently, like a CDC definition, or a CDC guidance or recommendation, or the data point surveys, or any of those factors, such that we're not writing a document that's going to be obsolete in 48 hours.
Right.
So to the degree that we can do that, it makes less work for everyone, and also makes it less likely that we end up having to readdress issues that, that should be fairly well settled. I will continue to watch and continue to report if we have anything that I believe that we need to have concerns about. As of right now, from a legal perspective, I'm in a comfortable place that we're doing our best.
Okay. And I also think it's really important for the public to know, and it does seem like there's a lot of community interest in these meetings now, and it is being reported, what we say, which is, in my mind, a very good thing. Because what people really want to know is, what is the deal? And, and what makes it difficult is that we know what the deal is now, but Friday, which is usually when the governor puts out emergency orders and modifies things, what day is it today, everybody?
Thursday.
Thursday. Tomorrow is Friday. So this is what we're operating under. And I wanted to make that clear. Also, I listened to the state board meeting on behalf of Alachua and Broward Counties, face covering mandates. And when I had a chance to hear about the process that they were expecting parents to go through, I kind of had a little chuckle out of it because I know personally, from being a special needs teacher, how long it can take to even get an IEP meeting, let alone get all this documentation that's required and have it reviewed, and then decided upon. It would have been, maybe not the end of the school year, but it would have been a really long time before all of that could have gotten work through. So in my mind, I felt like that both of those actions were very restrictive. And that's not a direction that I would feel personally comfortable going and that I would ever vote for. But I wanted to make that clear because as a school board member and as a citizen, I just want to make sure that we are on solid ground legally, and that we keep emphasizing that our only, our absolute only initiative is to keep schools open. And you don't, and you keep schools open by helping keep people healthy, by helping your buses be on time, by helping your employees, you know, be able to get there and do their job. So I'll just leave that right there. And we'll look forward to updates, which I'm certain we will get every other day or so. That's what it seems like. Yeah, probably this afternoon. And then we'll have to try to explain to the public all over again, you know, well, it was like that, and it wasn't that we changed our minds. It's now we have to adjust. We're having to constantly adjust and educate kids at the same time, who need stability.
I've got my redraft. May I confirm a couple of things briefly?
Sure.
On page two, item B, under Section 4, I have modified to include, to say, persons outdoors, including but not limited to recess or PE, and/or observing social distancing in accordance with CDC guidelines.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
And I just see here that I have, I'm going to have to alter that because I said including by not limited to. It should be including but not limited to.
That's your own mistake.
Yep.
Good job.
And then, under enforcement and penalties, Section B, violations may result in progressive disciplinary action in accordance with employee discipline outlined in the school board policies or collecting, collective bargaining agreements between the unions and school board, whichever applies.
Where was the word willful?
Uh, insub, not included. That was under insubordination. But we can say willful viola, willful violations may result in progressive disciplinary action. I think is what we had discussed, right?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm going to add in front of B, willful violations.
Okay.
And that should be, oh, I wanted to make sure that our number that we talked about, because I was not privy to the meeting with Mr. Lander, under Section 7 effective date and sunset provision, under the sunset provision, I had indicated that this resolution will terminate immediately upon substantial community transmission, reducing to less than 100 cases per 100,000, or test positivity rate reducing to less than 10% for 14 consecutive days. Those are the appropriate numbers?
They are appropriate numbers, but I think, based on the conversation, the word is not or, it's and. I think that we wanted both...
The two together? Okay.
I mean, I think that was the conversation that, again, I wasn't in that meeting either, but that was...
It was. It was both, because Dr. Gullet spoke to that.
Yes, it was. That was a clarifying, thank you, Board Member Campbell, because there were different times last year where you could be in one category and one respected another, or another data point. So we settled on, the recommendation was and from Mr. Lander. Yes.
All right. And then my understanding is, from reading here, that substantial community transmission is a rate that is above 10%. As soon as it drops below 10%, it actually falls to moderate. So my wording, this resolution will terminate immediately upon substantial community transmission, reducing to less than 100 cases per 100,000 or test positivity rating reduced to less than 10%, which puts us into moderate. So that, that language worked for you?
Terminate immediately upon reducing substantial community transmission or achieving, getting a little...
This resolution will terminate immediately upon substantial community transmission...
Reducing to, okay, all right.
Because we would be in the category of moder, of substantial...
Which would bring us into moderate.
To moderate. Now, I didn't include the language moderate transmission because it's, we're, I'm saying...
Isn't it high substantial?
I think we're in high...
Yeah, high to substantial.
Mr. Christian, can you...
It's upon, it's upon reaching substantial.
Yes.
It's upon reaching that...
We're in high right now.
Correct.
I just wonder if you could pull up that table.
That's fine.
Okay.
Once we get to substantial and are there for two weeks.
Right.
So it's upon reaching that...
Right.
...level.
Okay.
Yes.
I thought it was, it was trying to get below 10% or...
What I, what I was seeing from the graphic was that substantial community transmission was a rate that was 10% or above.
Correct.
And 10% or less was moderate.
Correct.
Right there. You are at it.
Yeah.
Oh.
So down at the bottom of that page, Mr. Christian, there we go, and those links that are various colors here, substantial transmission...
Substantial is eight to...
Is...
Nine point nine percent.
Yeah, high transmission is greater than...
10.
Greater than 10, greater than 100. So this would be...
Getting too substantial.
Getting too, yes.
Too substantial.
And it does say less than 10, for those of us that remember our math and which way those...
Substantial is 8%.
Greater than or less than?
Right.
Okay. So this resolution will terminate immediately upon substantial community transmission, reducing to less...
Should be high community transmission, reducing to...
I'm achieving substantial.
There you go. That's what I was about to say.
Achieving, okay, will terminate immediately upon achieving substantial community transmission. And then perhaps in parentheses...
Or like equivalent.
Indicate... Let me make sure that I'm doing this as a hard copy also. This resolution will terminate immediately upon substantial community trans, achieving, upon achieving substantial community transmission, then parentheses, reduction to less than 100 cases per 100,000, or test positive, and...
Actually, yes, and.
Fifty to ninety-nine per 100,000.
Yes, it's not an or, it's an and.
And test positivity rate reducing to less than 10%...
Yep.
...for 14 consecutive days.
Yep.
Right.
See data and graphics provided at, and that link.
We also, just for complete clarity, put in parentheses, less than. I know a lot of people remember greater than, less than from their years in school, but, you know, it's easy to fly by it. Let's be specific as possible.
So get rid of the less than sign and put...
And just put the words?
Or both, whatever. But I think that the word needs to be there. People understand less and more.
And I think that's important because the example that was provided, for, for example, there were times when we jumped a category and we could go from high to moderate. So if the language was only anchored in substantial, it could be confusing.
Right, right.
Right. It's, it's moving in that direction, or less, yes.
Okay.
Okay. From there, I need to send some things back... From there, I need to send some things back and forth between my office and get things ready and prepared for signature of the board today. And I understand we have some more items that are gonna be on today's agenda. If we want to take a recess, I can do that. That's certainly up to, up to you. I just need a few moments to step out, whether we do it now or whether we do it at the.
You're reading my mind because I was gonna request a 10-minute break. It's 10:50, so let's, let's.
Well, we'll need a public comment.
Until 10, yes, let's.
Sorry.
Oh, gosh, yes, yes, let's do public comment first and then we will take a 10-minute break. Is there any public comment? Okay, all right, see, oh, here he comes.
I did it this time. Good morning.
Morning.
My name's Mark Avery. I'm the president, mayor and education association. My last name is A V E R Y. I reside at three Diamond Ridge Way, Ocala, Florida, 34472. I was here the other night and I spoke that I believe we have to, as you, Chair Thor keeps saying, to keep the schools open, and I, I was saying is to keep everyone safe, students and staff. And they go hand in hand. And you also mentioned the confusion that we have from the governor's rule, whether the governor even had authority to make that rule is even in question by some people across the state. And we also have the president and the secretary of education saying that you can't limit schools' ability to provide masks and put clauses. So that's creating extra confusion. I sat here and I'm listening to us poke holes in it. And I am not gonna stand here and tell you that I want any teacher to be disciplined. And that's not what I would ever argue for. But I also know that what you said, if there's not some sort of way for accountability, and it could be positive where no one mentioned, it could be positive. It was only mentioned punitive, which therefore then I am told, or I was actually scolded this week by some of my members, that this is part of our working conditions and why weren't we asked to bargain this? And so that might be, that's probably something that we need to be sitting down to have some sort of discussion. And last year, we had COVID MOUs and we haven't had any discussion about those this year. But there are a lot of ifs in this document that are making it difficult for staff. And I'll give you an example. Last year, everybody wore the masks because it was what we needed to do and we needed to protect everybody and we wanted to be in school. Now, we're hearing the opposite as, as Mrs. Campbell said, she doesn't necessarily cause a threat, but it's the perception of a teacher's in front of students without a mask. Whether they're a threat or not, there's that perception. And then, as Mr. Power said, it says that you can social distance. So if I have a class with 10 students and we can all spread out, then I don't, nobody has to wear a mask and that's what it's written. But that doesn't mean it wouldn't be interpreted differently by administrators, somebody walking through the school or a district personnel and seeing that. And then there's the question of, is someone going to be spoken to or get disciplined of some sort? So there are some loopholes that we, I think we need to discuss. It's a difficult situation and again, we, we, as you said, double speak. We say we're gonna follow federal rules, but we're also gonna follow state rules. Well, which one oversees one? Because even when he was saying the resolution the other night that we would follow state, Department of Health and also CDC guidelines. Well, CDC guidelines say in school, regardless of vaccination status, all individuals should be wearing a mask indoors. I'm not arguing with you about the outdoors and I even told everybody, if you're outdoors, you didn't have to wear them. I followed what you guys said. I've specifically followed what you said. The questions have come up on the other things. And I think we're going to find issues of perception because the parent's gonna say, well, did your teacher wear a mask? Were the other students wearing masks? How many kids in your classroom wore a mask? I ask my children these questions. Were your desks moved apart? No. Even when we said we're gonna move desks apart. And we have some schools and some buildings that aren't large enough to do that. So I think we have some, still have some issues. I think we're going to have to constantly be open to discuss this. And maybe we can think of some, as you said, something out of the box. Maybe we can think of some positive ways to reinforce the staff that are doing what we ask them to do. So, and I'll use Mrs. Campbell as a perfect example. She clearly said she doesn't have to wear a mask as a, but she is doing that because that's what we've said. And so we could reward employees rather than punish employees. And, and I don't, I think that would be a, you know, we talk about having PBIS for students. Well, what about staff? I mean, why couldn't we make staff feel more important? In an era right now where we are short on staff, I think there's almost 200 vacancies as of today. Not even count how many people are out because of illness and quarantine. Could we make them feel better in the start of this new year that's been so difficult? Thank you.
Mr. Avery, I definitely heard everything that you said. And I do want to reiterate that this board, I remember myself mentioning throughout the course of the conversation that we want our employees to feel like they can come forward and speak to us and get clarification. Again, I don't know how we can make it more clear how confusing this is. You know, we're having to operate under direction from so many different authorities and yet try to keep schools open. I agree with you. We all have had to shift once again from a great summer, thinking this was behind us. You know, Camp Colonnus ran. We had tripled the number of kids on campus for summer school and some of those classes were, were full. And I think all of us thought that this was behind us. And that positivity rate spiked up very, very quickly and, and we're having to make those adjustments. So yes, I, for me, I think it's very important to convey to our employees and acknowledge that this is a very confusing situation. It's changing rapidly. And we say grace and compassion, well, we need to keep seeing it in action because they have a lot to deal with here. We all have a lot to deal with. And as far as the negotiating part, that's part of the day-to-day operation. And if that's what we did last year, and you know, it is part of working conditions. I agree with you. So let's do what we need to do. Let's make sure that our community and our employees know that we're doing everything that we can do and, and find as many areas as we can to work together. And I think sometimes in a crisis, people, they're like, well, just tell me what to do. Just tell me what to do. Well, you also need to use your, your professional expertise and you need to look at the constellation of students that you have in your classroom. I mean, we have kids that can't even move. They need people near them to be able to literally help them move. And then we have kids that are highly verbal and highly mobile. So we've got the whole gamut. And so I think it's pretty impossible to legislate and dictate, and I'm not even comfortable doing that for every single teacher in every single classroom. And hopefully the administrators are hearing us too, that we're trying to build in a lot of flexibility here based on what we do know. And what we do know is that when you are outside or, and when you're separated out, there's, that's the lowest chance for transmission. And we want to keep it that way. If, if our issue is community spread, then we have community agencies that can help with that message too and support us. But our message needs to continue to be keeping our kids in school, keeping our employees in school healthy and safe. They do go hand in hand. So, so thank you for your comments, but please convey that to your membership.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Hey, any other public comments?
We weren't able to fill out a form, so.
You can fill one out afterwards, right? I mean, let's have some grace and compassion here. You've been sitting here all that time.
I know, we came in late, so.
Well, we're glad to have you. Thank you for wiping off the podium. We need to do better on that.
Well, I just want to make a comment about this is a lot of management on your part to have to put together all these legal documents and everything.
You need to do your name and address, right?
Oh, my name is Marilyn Musket. I live here in Ocala and my grandson attends school here. So I've been following along very carefully. I'm also a health professional. I'm a registered nurse. And I, I hear that you rely primarily on the CDC and their guidelines. Is that correct? Am I understanding that correctly? The CDC guidelines go to the health department, then you're following along with the health department?
Well, this, this is your comment period, not.
Oh, okay. Well, I was just trying to get clarification. I'm just wondering if anybody has actually gone to the CDC website and scrutinized any of their cases that they're basing their guidelines on? Hopefully so. Okay, well, I would have to say that I dispute it, that they're very flimsy cases that they cite. And I, you know, think that you really need to dig in and really take a very close look at who you're following. Because I feel that it's, this is very detrimental. I can hardly breathe, I'm sorry. I'm upset. I, I'm telling you, these masks, you wear them for a prolonged period of time. Bacteria gets inside them. It's upsetting their blood gases and your oxygen intake. And also for the children, this is very detrimental, not only to their physical well-being, but also to their social development. I worked with people for a year and a half and when they, if, if I, I never saw them without their mask on. I wouldn't even recognize them in a store or out in public. So there's a social development issue to this as well, that you have students that are not seeing the faces of the people that they're interacting with. The teachers, I think it's very unfair to the teachers to require them to have a doctor's note. I think that's a violation of HIPAA. Maybe you disagree with that. But I think that there's implications to say you have to have a doctor's note for the teachers. And I, I don't think that they should have to wear a mask. It impairs their being able to, the students to be able to hear the teacher. And the teacher to have to breathe through a mask through that whole time of instruction puts a lot of stress on them. So I wish that there was more emphasis on hand washing. You know, I don't hear a lot about that, but hand washing is a big deal in spreading germs. And people are constantly, with their hands, there's a lot of people that don't wash their hands after, you know, at a regular basis. And that is the biggest cause of spreading germs. So that's, I really, you know, mainly what I wanted to point out was the CDC, some of the cases that they cite, two hairdressers, two hairdressers, that's the main, main case that they talk about. Two hairstylists that interacted with 100 customers. The next case is 124 families in Beijing. Yet the CDC said that the Denmark study that was over 3,000 people was too small. So there's contradictions and there's a lot of discrepancies. So we gotta look to the source of where things are coming from and make sure that that source is being honest. Because in my opinion, it's not. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will go ahead and take a break from 11:04 until about 11:15. Thank you. Haven't had that at all. We're going ahead and resume our work session, and we will go directly to Early Childhood Academy. Good morning, ladies.
Good morning, Chair Thrower, Vice Chair King, board members, Dr. Gallett and Ms. Prestapino. So, I'm bringing forward to you today three options for your review and discussion, and I'm seeking direction at the end for the development of the Early Childhood Learning Academy. So, in a previous school board work session, I shared with you information. So, you've seen this slide before. This slide just kind of recaptures what an Early Childhood Learning Academy could include. Some academies start with pre-K and they go through second, others go all the way through third. Other early childhood learning academies might start with kindergarten, and they might go through second or third grade. Most early childhood learning academies will have a primary area of focus, such as literacy or numeracy, along with the required state standards, right, for education. And so, in thinking and trying to develop options for you all to consider about the type of Early Childhood Learning Academy Marion County Public Schools needs, I reached out to several stakeholders, two of which are here today to help me, Ms. Fricks and Ms. Diola. And through some great, they were great thought thinkers or thought partners with me, and some good input from other community stakeholders, we narrowed it down to three options for you to consider. This is a summary slide of the three options that I'm going to talk about. So, based on the feedback and conversations that I've had with community stakeholders, we felt that Marion County Public Schools Early Childhood Learning Academy needed to start with three-year-olds, include VPK, which are our four-year-olds, and kindergarten students, at least for the first year. That would mean that the 2022-23 school year would start with three-year-olds, VPK and kindergarten. Then, the subsequent year, we would add first grade, right? The kindergartners would rise up. And then, the subsequent year after that, so the 2024-2025 school year, we would have three-year-olds all the way through second graders. You'll also notice, and you'll see, so you'll see that in all three options, that we're proposing that, those grade levels and ages for all three options. The other similarity that you'll see in all three options is literacy. We know that literacy impacts a lot of different areas, and literacy is critical to student success. Literacy is the ability to communicate both orally and written. And students need to be able to read and keep up with world events. And learning and being able to read is important to that. By understanding the world that they live in through reading and communication, they can make better decisions and become better problem solvers and more critical thinkers. Literacy can be emphasized a great deal, and this is, I'm sorry, the State Department of Education has also emphasized literacy this year, and that can be seen in the several House bills that they've passed into law, and even some reorganization that they've done at the state level through the Office of Early Learning, and also adding some state-regional literacy directors as well. I want to come back to the three-year-olds, because I know I mentioned that, but then I kind of went on to the other grade levels and literacy. And I want to elaborate more on the rationale for why we are asking to include three-year-olds in the Early Childhood Learning Academy. So, when a child turns three years old, they bridge over from that toddler age, and they're now of preschool age. And this, oh, sorry, this age is where the child is becoming much more aware of the world around them. They're more aware of the people. And they start to develop their own thinking, their own likes, their own dislikes, and they're getting to really experience specific feelings, and they're trying to understand those feelings. Also, a three-year-old is very inquisitive and creative at this age. They love to explore, and as you know, ask lots of questions. So, they are also developing their social-emotional sides of those feelings, and they're learning how to express those. Language at three is also very important, because they are expanding on their language and learning how to communicate all of those needs and wants and desires. So, this is one of the primary reasons that we are promoting to start with three-year-olds. If we could have three-year-olds in the Early Childhood Learning Academy while they're developing that language and then incorporate that language development with literacy, it would be beneficial to their future success. If we could start building that together, then these students, as they progress into VPK and then move into kindergarten, they would be ready to read, and some of them might, in fact, actually be reading by the time that they reach kindergarten. And so, that's why we wanted to share with you that our emphasis is those three-year-olds for all options. So, in addition to the focus of literacy that I mentioned, option one includes a focus on family engagement as a community school. This model of school provides all students with that strong educational focus that's based on the state standards, and in this case, it would also include those early childhood standards. But it also focuses on the needs of the whole child and the family. So, a community school provides services within the school setting. These services could be targeted to support both the learning needs of the students, but also the developmental and physical needs of the students. This could include healthcare, it could include dental care, and if the need arises, it could even include mental health care assistance for our youngest learners. The connection also to the community school, you'll see that word "family." So, it's also to help support those individual students, but really making the connection to the families as well. And so, if families are also needing support in helping their children grow and develop and learn, the idea is that this option would be able to provide those services to the family as well. So, say, for example, you might have young parents, parenting classes, about how their child is developing, or parenting classes about how to help support their child academically could be provided through the use of community partners within Marion County itself. Another idea is if you have families that might need English language classes or help obtaining a high school diploma or equivalent, or job skill training. We could identify community partners that could help provide that support to the families as well. Option two, the primary focus here that's being suggested is a focus on social skills and social-emotional learning. Thus, during the school day, students would receive instruction on the standards, the state standards, with that emphasis in literacy that I already mentioned, but they would also receive instruction and support on mastering social skills. As I mentioned, young children are becoming their own little people. And they know what they want, they know what they like, they know what they don't like, and they have lots of feelings going on. And so, the challenge with them, again, as I mentioned, is the ability to really communicate that well. And so, by providing social skills as a tool for students, we're helping provide them a tool that they can learn how to express themselves and advocate for themselves as well. Providing them some social-emotional learning also would help them learn how to identify those needs and feelings in others so that they could react and respond with each other using specific strategies and skills. But also here, for any students that, young students that may suffer trauma, the idea here is to still, again, offer that mental health assistance as needed to our young learners.
Dr. Hembrook, enjoying this presentation. I just wanted to alert you that we may be having a visitor, if she's able to make it, it would be about 11:30.
Absolutely.
Just wanted to draw that to your attention.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
We may have to take a quick break.
That's okay, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Option three, again, has the primary focus of literacy and the same age groups. This focus would be music education. The music education would be a combination of singing, rhythmic exercises, and then playing an instrument that's appropriate to the age or grade level for that student. Research shows that this type of learning impacts various other types of learning, including language development. An environment that's music-rich has activities that students are able to use multiple skill sets, such as their sights of sound, or their sight of, or their sense of sight. And they also are able to use their small and gross motor skills, which are critical at that age as well. Music education research studies shows that there is a link to students that have high resources of music to have high brain, it increases, it impacts brain development. They have strength in spatial skills, and it can lead to better self-expression. Music education also can tap into those young creative minds of three-year-olds. And so, those are just really a high-level summary of the three options to consider. Today, what I'm asking for is your direction about which of these options that you would like us to pursue, maybe get more information. We could also even do a combination of options, if that's your desire.
I'll speak. I would love to see an option four.
Okay.
And, because I don't know that we can separate in terms of importance, family engagement, definitely, music education, it makes me think of Senator Perry's bill that he worked so hard to bring forward for early music education. And I believe that social skills and social-emotional learning are always being embedded all day, every day with kids, anyway. And we do have a tier-one social skills curriculum. I don't know if it makes it all the way down to three, but elements of it, we know certainly do. You know, taking turns, sharing, washing your hands, all that kind of stuff, how to work in a group. So, I would love to see, if we're going to do a pre-K, you know, model school, let's have it be a true model, and let's have it all.
I completely concur, and I saw Elizabeth shaking her head on every one of them. Like, yep, that's good, music education's good, yep, social-emotional learning, all that. And so, I don't know how you separate out, honestly, to say that we're only going to focus on one or the other. And these ladies and I know very well, community school and the role that that plays in the community, and how important having partners, and even if we're talking music education, maybe that's also a partnership opportunity that we could bring in. Same thing with social skills, I mean, so there's just lots of opportunities for partnerships. And so, I think more than anything, to have it be a community school model, including all of these other elements that community partners can also help us with.
And music is literacy, I mean, when you're learning Wheels on the Bus and all that, you know. What do you think, Vice Chair King?
No, I agree. I'm hearing the three-year-old students, and I'm thinking money, funding. How's that work with us being K through 12? That's immediately what I'm hearing, you know, what's coming to my mind.
Right. that we would need to find that funding source for, for those three-year-olds. You're absolutely right.
Yeah, because when I'm thinking of schools, I'm thinking, you know, pre-K, like, when I think of the preschools, I know all of our elementary schools have them now, right? The BPK.
Yes.
So, I'm thinking about that, and I'm like, okay, they're out there. So, when I think of these type of schools, I'm leaning a little bit more toward, unless I don't have all the information, which I'm asking, you know, because we know money, funds, and stuff like that. I'm just leaning a little bit more toward like BPK through third, or something like that group, because I'm like, third grade is like, they're not quite fourth graders, you know, old enough and independent yet, but they're getting on the older end, too. So, I just need more information before I agree to anything like that, and what it's truly going to look like. And I do agree with what our chair said, like, all of those things are important, and for us to dissect it and just say, well, we're just going to talk about how to behave, well, that doesn't even, as a teacher, that doesn't even make sense to me. Like, it should be part of it, and stuff like that. I think I just need more information and how we're going to fund it, and what it's going to look like for maybe option four.
I don't want to push them off the spot, but I know you have some great ideas.
All of you know me, and we appreciate the opportunity, and are honored and privileged to be a part of this discussion and in at the ground floor, if you will, for an Early Learning Academy in Marion County. When you go and look at the demographics of the location of the current, the facility that you're evaluating for this type of opportunity, the demographics scream school readiness. The demographics scream the ability to have the families take advantage of other resources that are out there besides funding just through the school district. Additionally, when you look at the opportunity of creating an option four, if you will, you're going to increase your number of opportunities for partners and for funders, not just locally, through private enterprises, but through other organizations as well. And I do know that we have some individuals that are in our community that are interested in funding, say, a literacy piece, or a family engagement piece, et cetera, et cetera. So, pulling all of it together, I think that funding would be out there, and right now, with the availability of additional federal funds as well as state funds, there are pots of money that are specifically for mental health, that are specifically for social skills, that are specifically for creating quality early learning environments for our three-year-old children, and we're in a position to step up to the plate with that. And Elizabeth would love to do that. Programs is her thing. So, I understand completely, Vice Chair King, what you're saying, and I think that the opportunities are there, and I think that now is the time to act.
Yeah, and I agree with that. Also, I love the music piece also, because you talked about that community and what it screams for, but I live near that community, and there's also the side that necessarily isn't screaming for the help that you just described, so I'm thinking, how are those students going to be enriched and better, too? So, rather than just, if that makes any sense, like, I'm just thinking how to take it all, and what makes sense for, you know, many and most. I do think there truly is a community out there that's probably being neglected and a little left out, too, if that makes sense on that piece. That's probably more for Dr. Gullett than maybe you.
Well, and I think that that's why your private funders in the community will also step up and be a part of those opportunities for that area.
And Ms. Fricks, if you would, just go ahead and introduce yourself in the position, and also, we know you, but for the community piece.
Roseanne Fricks, Early Learning Coalition, Marion County CEO.
I'm Elizabeth Diola, I'm the Chief Program Officer for the Early Learning Coalition in Marion County. And may I add to what you were saying? I think this opportunity, from a programming perspective, I've been with the Coalition, watching this community grow for 17 years, right along with Roseanne, this is a holistic opportunity to create an inclusive environment that nurtures the trauma and the things that that part of that community out there have endured throughout this process. So, this is a great opportunity, and I'm thankful that you all have invited us to talk and share.
Timing is everything, you know, and you have to capture people's attention at a time when they're able to take it in. And I'm also wondering, too, if a piece to this will be having it as a learning lab for our aspiring teachers to be able to come and volunteer and that sort of thing, in the spirit of continuing to grow our own.
Yeah, oh, yeah, and I think that that opportunity is definitely there, again, in partners with College of Central Florida, as well as, well, what used to be MTI, but is now whatever. So, yes, I think that opportunity is there, plus if you look at the child, the private childcare providers in that area, they are going to be in a better position as well to partner, and there are not as many available private childcare providers in that area. So, having this opportunity there is going to be an opportunity for expansion and strengthening of early learning just in that community.
And how does that look for Oakcrest, too, then? Like, if we're looking at those schools and grade levels, and we had that school that is there, like, how is that going to look for Oakcrest? Like, I just have a bunch of questions that I'm sure will be answered.
Oh, site-wise, because we're, I guess, are you thinking that we'd be using Evergreen?
I'm thinking numbers and sites, and, well, I'm thinking Evergreen, because that's our school, and I'm sure that's.
We're talking about repurposing it for that.
Right. Is that the school we were thinking about repurposing, or am I, or no? Because I just assumed that, I could be wrong.
Well, I think that's for you all to decide, right? So, I think my next steps is, what I'm hearing you say, is to merge the options and bring you back more detail, specifically in regarding to maybe some more specifics about the fundings, and that school facility is an option that you all could, if that's the best option, and that's the best location, that that's where we could go, you know, that's, of course, your decision. In regards to who would go there, I will work with Mr. Ayers' department as well, and bring back some options of what that does, what that looks like, right? So, we're not excluding anyone, you know? I could bring back that information as well.
Yeah, there's just some factors, because that's, like I said, I was just assuming that school and thinking about that area, I didn't think that that really may not be.
And I'm even thinking, and maybe this is a little bit off from the model of what is being presented, but I'm even thinking of, especially for the three-year-olds, that they could potentially pay for service, essentially like the way our extended day does now. I know that's a different department, I get all that, but I could see that, actually, if parents are already potentially paying at least a portion, maybe they're not paying all, but a portion of childcare now, that we become an affordable option, and may even have a little bit of pay-for-service. I have no idea what that looks like, but again, just throwing out ideas. I had seen Ms. Boston Ellis directly behind you, so I know we're thinking money here, and to Ms. King's point, that obviously that is something we have to take into consideration, but I could even see that as a potential, at least for that age range, that there isn't state funding for. And so, it's supplemented with private funding, but.
Absolutely, but I did learn this week, last week, recently, that in Hillsborough County, there is a pilot going on with childcare provider located at an elementary school there. So, this would be right in lines with things that are going on throughout the state as well, to see how it all works together to meet the needs of the community.
It is amazing how the old becomes new again, because when I first started at North Marion High in 1997, we had the Kitty Colts, and that was actually an elective that students could take, and it was childcare right there on the campus. And so, that also gets me thinking about our Young Parent Program, the YPP, and depending on what we decide eventually to do with MTI and that building, if we do decide on Evergreen, it certainly seems like there'd be plenty of room to house that program there as well. And when you talk about community engagement, you know, we'd be getting them really young, you know, at that point. Yes, and the data is 100% clear that if, the sooner we can get kids in a print-rich environment, and, you know, getting that stimulation they need, that's a good thing to prepare them to be successful in school. And were you alluding to our more accelerated kids having a?
Right, I'm thinking about how we can accelerate, and that could probably be, because we focus a lot, and every student, but my point is, is how do we accelerate our students?
Our young geniuses.
Our young geniuses, even our average students, you know? How do we get to that next level, just as much as we're focused on, like, how do we get our three-year-olds and, you know, them up? Well, how do we get everybody up? Because I'm not okay being mediocre and just kind of like focusing on a certain subgroup so much that we're not doing what we necessarily could be with our other students, and that's what I'm getting at. Like, how do we all kind of?
Right, right, absolutely. Heard.
So, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you all for your feedback, and to Ms. Fricks and the team, great conversation. And I'm going to take us back to what I shared earlier this morning about being innovative and thinking differently, and this is true opportunity, if the board supports us moving forward to further address these items on what a true collaborative partnership can look like innovatively. I had shared with the team internally that I was suggesting three-year-olds, and I know Roseanne and I are on the same page with that from her area of expertise, because being able to access that learning to ready them for kindergarten and enrich them as well. So, to your point, Vice Chair King, I think there is a great opportunity for that. We also talked about these options being, could be a combination of those together, so I appreciate hearing that. But we will bring back, if the board, if we hear a consensus from the board to bring back what those options look like, but we appreciate the opportunity to think more broadly about a true partnership for our students and the community, and thinking differently. And I do think that the three-year-old piece has an opportunity to make that different and allow access to our students to be enriched and to be ready and prepared for kindergarten.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Gullett, and thank you, ladies. Yes, anyone can say, and everyone says it a lot, oh, community, community. Well, here's the example, you know, and we're getting more and more of those, and even just yesterday, as kids get older, you know, and they're on their path, we are going to have, I think the goal is to have a volunteer from every industry where we're providing certification training from that industry, to really make sure that the training is remaining relevant, and, you know, we always talk about how fast things are changing. So, to really have the community embedded with us and partnering with us is just wonderful, really wonderful. Thank you so much.
And if I may, I want to piggyback on that, and thank Ms. Fricks and Ms. Diola. They have offered countless times to meet and talk and provided great input and feedback, so I am enjoying this opportunity, so thank you, I appreciate it.
Fun stuff, yes.
Okay.
Right people at the right table for the right reasons.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there any public comment? All right, seeing none, we will move on to terminal pay and benefits for employees.
All right, I am on the, can anyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello?
Oh, wonderful. Hello?
You're a little muffled.
Okay, I'll hold the phone a little bit farther away, maybe, does that help?
No.
No? Closer.
Closer, how about this?
That's better.
Okay, perfect. Well, good morning, Chair Thrower, Vice Chair King, Board Members, Attorney Powers, Dr. Gullett, and Mrs. Prestapino. I am very glad to be here today with Mrs. Teresa Boston Ellis and bring terminal pay to you. Increases to terminal pay came to the district as an MESP union proposal during the 2021 fiscal year. It came to us during bargaining, and then later was brought to the board by MESP, if you remember, in impacts. However, at that time, you as the board decided that you didn't want to modify terminal pay for just one group, that that wouldn't be equitable, and you asked us to bring the topic of terminal pay back to you at a later date for all employee groups for you to consider. So, that's exactly what we're doing today, and there's actually a handout, I'm not, I don't know if you have it yet or not, there's a terminal pay handout.
We do.
We've got some paper copies, and it should also be there reflected on your devices.
Yes, Mr. Carson just handed them out to us, Ms. Oliver.
Beautiful, okay. So, I'd like to direct you to the top of that page, and at the top of that page, it discusses, let me get to mine, it discusses the MESP proposals, just so I could refresh your memory as to what that was about. So, the proposal from MESP that we did not entertain, because it was only for one group of people, suggested that the terminal pay would only be for people who separated from the district and were not terminated, so separation, yes, but not for termination purposes, and that the terminal pay would be at the employee's rate of pay, regular rate of pay. So, as you can see in C there, terminal pay is laid out in five steps. The first step would be during the first three years of service, so from day one to the end of the third year of service, if someone separated from us, not terminated, but just separated, the daily rate of pay would be multiplied by 35% of their accumulated leave. So, basically, that just means they would get 35% of their accrued and unused sick time. So, to give you, to give you an example of what that would be, instructional personnel are given four sick days, like, immediately, and let's say someone resigned in the first few weeks of being hired, they would collect 35% of those four days at their regular rate of pay. That's what that first item means. And then it goes from there. Every three years, the employee would earn a greater percentage of their accrued leave, 40%, 45%, 50%, for the first, one, two, three, for 12 years, and then during or on the first day of the 13th year and upward, the employee would earn 100% of their accrued sick leave when they separate from the district, as long as it's not due to termination. So, that was the proposal, and just to let you know, this proposal is the most that the Florida statutes will allow us to do as a district for terminal pay for employees. That is the most we're allowed to do, so that was, they went with the greatest proposal they could go with. Currently, and I thought this would be important for you to know, current contract language for all three unions are our instructional union, our MESP non-instructional union, and our IUPAT union is as follows, A, B, and C. The same applies, if they separate but are not terminated, they will get terminal pay as outlined here, and then it shall be at their regular rate of pay, and this is what we do after those things are established. Only when the employee completes 10 years of service, so they have 10 completed years of service to 12 completed years of service, only then do they earn terminal pay, and they earn it at the rate of 50% of their accrued leave. So, in the zero to three years, none of that exists, they have to have completed 10 years to earn 50% of their accrued leave. After the 12th year, so beginning the 13th year and thereafter, they earn 100% of their accrued leave. So, this is true for the three unions, but the board policy is a little different, just for your information, before we get into what we've come to, you know, bring you today so you can look at making decisions about this. So, the board policy is the same in relation to 10 to 12 completed years of service, employees will receive 50% of their accrued sick leave in a payout, as long as they weren't terminated. Also, when the employee reaches the 13th year of service or more, they receive 100% of their accrued sick leave. The difference with the board policy, though, for all the non-union members, this is only paid out at the regular retirement age or retirement time. And I would defer to Teresa on this, but I do believe that means 30. And I would defer to Teresa on this, but I do believe that means 30 years of service or greater. So, with the unions, it's any separation, except for termination, they do not have to reach normal retirement time. But with the board policy, everyone that is not in a union, they have to reach normal retirement time. All right. Are there any questions about that before we go on to the second piece?
Any questions, board? No, ma'am.
Okay, beautiful.
I guess it's my turn now, J.C.
Yeah.
For the survey, okay.
I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Boston Ellis, and she has completed a survey of multiple districts to show you what other districts are doing. And then she also has costed out what the original MESP proposal would have cost us had we applied it to all personnel last year. Thank you, Teresa.
Correct. Good morning. I think it's still morning, yes. As J.C. stated, your first handout gives you what the MESP proposal was. And also, she reiterated that your instructions to us was to go back and provide information via a survey, a survey of various districts. I do want to provide a point of clarification is although the board policy does say for normal retirement, we have been following the CBA for all employees. And I have Rebecca Gideon here with me from payroll. She and Holly Sadler in their department have done this survey, have completed this survey and identified 12 different districts, and we hope that we've captured the districts that you like to look at. Also want to add that you can have the 30 years or 62 years old in terms of retirement. I want to point out in this survey, of course, the first column is the county, and then the terminal sick leave pay percentage is in that second column. The third column is the terminal pay reasons. So, there's two different words here. There's retirement or death and also separation. I asked Becky to provide a definition of each one of these. So, separation is any termination, resignation, except when the employees are dismissed by the board. So, it could be, as she stated, I come here and I work two months. Because I have accrued leave in Marion County now, I would, whatever I've earned and not used, I would take that out if I had stayed 10 years. But under this new policy, I would get it within those zero to three years. Does that make sense? Okay. Also, retirement is based on the Florida retirement system. So, the Florida retirement, the FRS system rules retirement, which is the 30 years or 62 years old. So, as you can see, there's 12 districts that were surveyed. And for the most part, most of these districts are using that 35%, 40%, 45%, 50%, and 100%. But that only applies when there is a death or a normal retirement. The outliers, such as for separation, include Dade County, Levy County, Marion County, and partly Volusia County. So, those have a terminal sick leave pay that is paid out upon separation and not As J.C. started, stated earlier, we did have payroll do sort of an analysis looking at our payroll for the last year in terms of our sick leave. We paid out about $2 million in sick leave last year. If we had followed the criteria that the MESP union requested, it would have been an additional $240,000 that would have been paid out because we had gone to the zero to three, three to six years. So, we had gone to that prorated payout of leave. If we had used that formula, we would have paid out about $250,000. Last year was COVID, so I don't know if that number would have been higher because we did provide the Epsilon leave and the extra five days. So, people were not, they weren't basically using their sick leave for the most part. So, the sick leave is, to me, it's a cash payout, and we would have to actually budget and estimate for making these kinds of payouts every year. But I thought it was important, and I'm so glad you asked us to do a survey of districts, because if you look at Marion County, in my opinion, because we are paying out at separation, even though you have to stay longer, it is a more advantageous plan to me versus waiting until someone retires.
Yeah.
And just to provide you with a little information, sick leave is earned one day per month, except for the original uploading of leave for some of our staff. And so, a bus driver would earn six hours a month, times 10 months they work. So, they would earn 60 hours in the year, in one year. A teacher, 7.75, times 10 months, that's what they would earn every year. Custodian, eight hours times 12 months. And an assistant principal, eight hours times 11 months. So, that gives you a flavor of what's being earned every year in sick leave. And that's basically the survey, unless you have some additional questions about it.
The survey is great. I don't have any questions on the survey. Can you guys?
And board?
Yes.
Just to give a little bit of a history, our, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. To give a little bit of history, the terminal pay was outlined to encourage longevity. So, I think that was part of discussion, you know, at least that's what I've always been told, which is why people didn't get a payout of any sort until the 10th year. Just some history to know.
Right. I've got a couple of initial comments and thoughts. We have consistently had a shortage of employees, you know. It's the pool's getting narrower and more shallow, and we're all fishing in the same one. So, to try to encourage, recruit and retain employees, there's always a payoff there, you know, when they stay. So, I'm sort of looking like at this as a potential recruitment tool. Do we have any room with, especially with the situation, the way things are currently in the workforce? You know, people are getting a bonus to start and then leaving the next two days later. And so, we certainly don't want to encourage that. I don't think that someone that's only, hasn't even made it through their probationary period and leaves would be entitled to anything, in my opinion. But there's a lot more mobility in society now than there used to be, and anyone staying at a job for 10 years has been, become the outlier. We want to encourage people to stay, and that's why I like the progression of the percentages. What I need to mull over is, when would that begin? I believe for recruitment and also retention, at this point where we are, that 10 years is too, way too late. Those are just some of my initial thoughts.
Ms. Thrower, if I might, we would be, they would be separating, meaning leaving our district, and we would be paying them as they leave our district versus paying them to stay. I just wanted to make that clear.
I understand that point, Ms. Boston Ellis, but I also understand it from what Ms. Thrower is saying. So, if you're coming in as a new employee, showing all of the benefits, and if this were to occur, then this is what you receive.
Yes, we have to look forward to.
That actually can help in the retention or even the recruitment process of having a more effective benefits package rather than showing someone. And all of that, you know, thousand-up hours of sick leave that you get, you don't get it unless you stay with us at least 10 years. There's just, there's some connotation to that. But I also want to go back to what Ms. Thrower was saying. I completely concur. I'm shocked that on a single one of these with a tiered plan start at zero to three years. I would definitely say if we were to go in that direction.
You put all that work into hiring them and onboarding them?
You have to at least have one year of service before you get any sick leave benefit at all. At least, that's my opinion, at least one year of service. I am interested to see the difference in the separation versus the death or normal retirement, as these other districts have spelled that out. So, I need to think more about that part of it, actually, if we were to bargain this and negotiate what that would look like, based on what the other districts that are doing this tiered concept, you, I don't want to say, but like, so they've brought us this potential proposal that we're considering, okay, well, if we're going to go with that direction, then we're actually going to bargain that we're going to change it off of separation, and it might act, that's just me talking, might actually go to the death or normal retirement options. So, that's the part I'm weighing. But I definitely agree with Ms. Thrower that it doesn't need to start until at least one year of service, if not more.
Plus, how do you, how do you get, let's just look at Citrus County, for example. Someone's been there 3.01 to six years, they get 40%. But then it says reasons, death or normal retirement. Well, so that's not, you're not going to normally retire, so that means you have to die.
Well, you could, depending on your age, you could retire. So, it's FRS retirement, it's depending on their age.
Right.
So, if they're 59 and they worked three years.
Come to us live.
Then they're, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Wasn't thinking about that.
Well, today was just to provide this information, because that was your request.
Right.
We aren't coming to you today for a consensus.
Right.
It's just to prevent, provide this to you.
Yes.
And we can come back.
I think you're going to have to. We need some, a chance to mull it over.
Okay.
And we haven't even heard from our vice chair yet.
Yeah, when I look at this, I agree, they should be there more than zero, maybe one to three. I like the steps, but personally, I like the separation. We're in a mobile society, right? And if I looked at Levy County, and I'm like, look, I could work there for whatever years in, yeah, Levy, and just leave, or I could be at Marion and not get anything, well, I'm going to go to Levy because it would make sense to me financially.
Or Citrus. No, that's death or normal retirement, right?
Yeah. I was like, I don't think I look at Citrus. But if I was looking at this, so.
Looking at adjoining counties.
That's my thoughts. I prefer separation rather than death or retirement at this point, especially, it's not like it was 10 years ago or 20 years ago. We're, you know, our millennials are a lot different than.
And I wonder of the numbers that you, you probably don't have this, and I'm not asking for it, but of the $200-plus thousand it would have cost us last year, how much of that was in the first year of employment? And that, and I don't know what that number is, and I'm, you know, again, you probably don't have that spelled out.
I'm sure we can get it.
Right, but to say, okay.
Would be good to know.
You know, how much of that $200-plus thousand was, they came and worked for three months, and this just wasn't for them? Or, you know, the six-month or eight-month, or maybe look at it from the year beyond, because I think that we, I think we have consensus for, at least it needs to be a year. And then that, maybe that number looks a little different. I don't know. Maybe it looks exactly the same. We don't know yet.
Just keep in mind that this is something we would have to budget.
Right.
So, this is an additional expenditure to the, to the district.
Right. Yes, yeah, so it would be good to get those numbers to find out where the sweet spot is, you know, that they leave, they leave, they leave, and then that kind of trails off. And I think that would be helpful, really helpful information. And there's also a cost to having continuous openings, you know. And that's not as easy to quantify in a dollars and cents situation. But I do know, you know, teachers picking up other classrooms, extra duty, all of that does take its toll as well. And then we're maybe paying for it on the insurance side. I know that's much harder to quantify, but it's stressful when you're operating under these kind of skeleton crew-type conditions for years and years and years. So, all right, well, thank you very much for bringing this up. It's good information. Okay. All right, is there any public comment? Of course.
Welcome back, Ms.
That's right, welcome back, Mr. Avery. Always good to see you.
Now, I can say good afternoon.
That's right, you can.
My name's Mark Avery, A.V.E.R.Y., reside at 3 Diamond Ridge Way, Ocala, Florida, 34472. I'm the president of the Marion Education Association. And this has been a topic that we've tossed around for a while, and I'm not going to go into everything, but I want to give you three, three ideas. So, one that was mentioned, it's not the same as we were 10 or 20 years ago. So, roughly 10 years ago, the state changed the rules and made teachers all annual contract. So, they have no, they have less control over their career now. So, when they, we couldn't, we didn't have tenure, but we had professional service contracts. So, you had some sense of job security. We no longer have that. So, before, it was more in the employees' control to stay longer and be able to achieve that 10 years. Now, it could be in year eight, the district has a financial thing and says, we're going to get rid of annual contract teachers. And other districts have done that, just said, we're not going to, and we just let them go, and then they lose this. Now, the other point I would make is that we want to advertise this as a benefit. And in all the impasse hearings we had in last year, the district presented on their side that we provide this benefit of these sick days or sick personal days. Of course, I believe it's in statute that you have to give them to the employees, but they said it's a benefit, but then if I need to, but I can't take it with me. So, it's kind of a two-way street. And there was a third. The third one was, what happens is these employees that don't, they're going to leave in less than 10 years, they start using those days. So, while I can't take it with me, I start, I start using my days. If I know that this is a career that I only plan to be in Marion County for five years, I'm not saving those days. And we have an issue in the district of getting employee, outside of COVID, getting employees to come to work, okay? And we don't, we have a substitute issue, we've talked about many times, and that's just for that department. I don't know how other departments of other people have to make up the work. I know, and even some of the instructional places, we don't get a substitute. So, we have a school where there's two guidance counselors, one's out on COVID right now, so the other guidance counselor has to do their job and the other instructor's job. So, when people can't use their sick time, they take extra days off. And I want to say that the average was a lot higher than we would like to know about how many people, how much days are used per year. And I would just pose one question, and I'm not challenging Ms. Boston Ellis, so don't take it that way, but she said it would be an additional budget, we'd have to budget for that. But don't we budget for sick time now? If I get, you're not going to give me my days during the year and not expect to have to pay them during the year for an employee. So, I would assume there has to be some sort of budget consideration for that during the year. Maybe not, again, I'm not in her job, but, so those are my points. Thank you for your time, and I will give her my sheet.
Thank you, Mr. Avery. Is there any additional public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move into the continuation of budget review, three of three. And Ms. Boston Ellis, you're back up again.
And just to address Mr. Avery's concern, we do budget terminal pay based on what we have paid out in the prior year. What I said is this will be an additional cost that we will need to budget for. So, in this past year, I would have, we budgeted for $2 million for terminal pay. So, if we were under the requested terminal pay schedule, we would have had to move budget to the tune of about $240,000 from another place or from fund balance, because we did not budget for that. So, yes, we do budget for terminal pay, and it is based on historical data.
And Ms. Boston Ellis, not that I'm trying to put words in Mr. Avery's mouth, but I think what his interpretation of that was, is that our employees are accruing this sick time. And if they were working, we would be paying them when they took a sick day. So, we, so while it's a different bucket of money essentially, it is in the budget. But you're moving it to terminal pay because that's But you're, you're moving it to terminal pay because that's how they're being paid out of the terminal pay bucket. But if they're accruing it, somewhere in the budget, we have that accrued sick time holding a place for it. Does that make sense? I mean, they're, they're getting.
No, as I stated, we, we do terminal pay as a cash item. So it's not an accrual. It is, we pay it out, out exactly what is due to an employee. So there is no budget for sick leave, no ma'am.
So we, we don't have a line item for accrual sick days?
No.
Thank you.
Just FYI, I just want to make sure everybody understands.
And plus, if we change the percentages, then you're saying that it'll be an additional expense?
Correct.
That's where the 240.
And we will budget for it, if that is the, the board's desire.
That becomes our, yeah, that's our question.
Right, okay.
Our essential question.
I just want to be clear. Okay, so we will get back to the 21-22 budget. You did have a couple of questions that we needed to address. And the first one was a request about the budget for safe schools funding. As you can see, we have revenue that we received from the state, $2.7 million. Also, I added the revenue that we received from the referendum. That goes towards safe school expenditures. So your expenditures for safe schools, which includes the resource officers, the safe schools office, which includes the director of safe schools and four employees and a secretary. Also, there are, they have some minor expenses. And then also, it includes the hardening, so that's the fencing, which also, we include the door buzzers as well as some other items towards hardening of the schools. So those are delineated, 3.3 million in the general fund budgeted expenditures, 2.8 in the referendum fund. So total budgeted expenditures are $6.2 million, which would show you that we have an unfunded portion of that safe schools budget, those budgets, to the tune of about $600,000 excess revenue, or revenue less budgeted expenditures. I believe this was Ms. Thorough's question, or is this what you wanted?
Yes, ma'am.
The next, we talked about special revenue and salaries and benefits. And there was questions about the change from budget to budget. Also, the change from actual to tentative for the classifications of other certified instruction, paraprofessionals, and other support personnel. On the second sheet, you will see an explanation of changes from the original budget to the tentative budget. These, you will know, are all of our grants that had activity and changes. There was a carryover from the ESER 1 grant, $166,000. Also, in the ESER 2, which was new, there were a content area specialist, three, and five intervention teachers between budget to budget. For the FANS model school program, these positions were amended in during the 2021 year, so they were not in the original budget. This was a coordinator, program specialist, and a health teacher. Also, in the IDEA B grant, there was a behavior specialist added, and also a school intervention therapist, .5. The School of Hope was in the 2021 budget, but it is not in the 2021-22 budget. And then Title 1 Basic, there were positions added, as well as the estimated carryover for instructional coaches. Title 2, there was some changes, a reduction in contract days for three program specialist positions. Title 4, student support and academic enrichment, there was a carryover of $241,000. And then various smaller grants, miscellaneous changes of negative $59,000. So in these items, they're not necessarily people, but it was things that were budgeted in a salary account. The next object is 1,500 salaries paraprofessionals. In ESER 1, there is a carryover amount, $259,000. ESER 2, the classroom substitutes were changed from ESER 1 for the second year to ESER 2. And also, there was 13 paraprofessionals added, to the tune of $1,094,000. The Gears Cares Act grant was in the 2021 year. It, it is not in the 21-22 year.
Ms. Boston Ellis, hate to slow your roll, but I have a quick question on the paraprofessionals, the 13 that were hired.
Yes.
Are, are these the homeschool liaisons, or?
I believe they are in 1,600.
They're in 1,600, so 1,500 are.
Paraprofessionals.
Typical, more typical paraprofessionals.
And it probably was the summer school program.
Ah, okay, all right, thank you. Okay.
I'll slow down. It's, oh, sorry.
Oh, no, you were, you were going along, and I, I didn't want to forget to ask the question, and, because there's a lot of information here.
Absolutely. They do a lot of great work.
Oh, yes.
Trying to reconcile these.
There's so much to it.
Yes. The next, there are homeless had a carryover in the 2021 year, but there was no carryover in the 21-22 year. IDEA B, there was positions that were added. 15 were budgeted, and they were budgeted based on their existing staff salary. We're trying to go more to what people are actually making, unless it's a vacancy. And we've been doing that in the general fund, but we are now looking at those items in the grant and trying to help them set them up the same way we do in the general fund, so that it's easier to reconcile at the end of the year. Also, there was various other grants, miscellaneous changes of about $32,000. So the total budget to budget change of 1.4 million dollars in the Object 1,500. And the Object 1,600, the, there was a carryover for ESER 1, $45,000. And ESER 2, here are those homeschool liaisons, 36 were added, to the tune of $1.1 million. Again, the CARES Act was ended in 2021. And then IDEA B had some additional positions, clerk specialist of 1.2 unit. The Schools of Hope is another grant that ended in 2021, so that is not active in 21-22. Title 1 Basic, there was a position change from a finance clerk that was upgraded to a budget specialist. And then the homeschool liaisons were added hours for parent involvement events. So Title 1 already had the homeschool liaisons. So what they did was added a few hours to help them with parent involvement activities. And then various miscellaneous changes. So the change from budget to budget was $917,000. On the next page, we are comparing actual expenditures for 2021 to the 21-22 tentative budget, following the same premise, looking at the grants, their actual expenditures in 2021, and comparing them to the tentative budget for 21-22. Again, you'll see that there are added positions from the actual expenditures for ESER 2 to the tentative budget, those content area specialists, and the five intervention teachers. So basically, what we're looking at is the activity that occurred in the 2021 year, and comparing that to the tentative budget. So you may see some of the same explanations, because these units did not exist, or it was a smaller dollar amount. Again, the FANS model program, there was a funding change from the actual expenditures in 2021 to 22. Health science teacher, .22, and a program specialist, .45. A lot of times, what you will find is that there is split funding. So if you see a .2 or a .45, that means there is another funding source, and it's typically the general fund that's paying the other side of it, or another grant. Title 1 Basic, there were some unfilled positions during the year of 2021, but they are budgeted in the 21-22 year, content area specialists. And then they also added some positions, instructional coaches, four of those. And then the Title 1 Basic, estimated carryover in this particular account string. And so that totals $713,000. Title 2, there were some unfilled positions during the 2021 year, 1.85, and that's $73,000. Title 4, Part A, and this is an estimated carryover amount of $213,000. And then, of course, various smaller grants, miscellaneous changes, $34,000. Totaled $1.6 million change from actual to tentative. In Object 1,500, 21st Century Grants, there's several of them. They have a total estimated carryover amount of $72,000. ESER 1, a reduction in units, so remember the classroom subs that we paid out of ESER? Those went away, and they also have a estimated carry forward of $426,000. ESER 2, again, a funding change, the funding change for classroom substitutes, and also the added paraprofessional positions. IDEA B, there were unfilled positions in 2021, and special need paraprofessionals, and there was 12 of them. So there were no expenses in the 2021 year, and they have been rebudgeted. Also, there were additional positions in the budget for 21-22, and these were 26 special needs pairs. Title 1 Basic, these were some unfilled summer positions, $121,000. In most instances where you'll see summer school unfunded positions, it's because we moved the funding to one of the ESER grants, or moved the expenses to the ESER grant. And then there were various other miscellaneous grants that had $1,100 worth of charges. In Object 1,600, again, ESER 2, we added the homeschool liaisons, 36 of them, 1.1 million. Title, excuse me, IDEA B, added the clerk specialist, 1.2 unit. And then also, in Title 1, there was additional funds for, that weren't used for summer transportation. They were picked up by ESER. And then they had an unfilled position, that budget specialist was hired mid-year. So that total for Title 1 Basic was $483,000. And then various other grants, miscellaneous changes of a negative $41,000, and that total is 1.6 million. So that explains all of the changes in the special revenue fund expenditures for salaries.
Circling back to the safe schools. Yes, revenue, safe school allocation, where does that money come from?
The state.
Okay.
That is our safe schools allocation, 2.7 million that we receive every year. It changes based on the unweighted FTE of, of our students.
Okay, and then when I go down to the third column on the right, the total budgeted expenditures is 6 million?
Correct. That's why I said, we have an unfunded need that the general fund is picking up of the difference between the revenue that we're receiving and the expenditures. And it has been like that since we have gone to, I guess, the, the entire expanded need for safe schools.
Yes, and some of that money is, a good chunk of it, it looks like, is coming out of our funding referendum.
Correct.
Almost $3 million. And that.
If you may recall, what we did for the 21-22 budget is we moved some of the resource officers' costs to referendum, so that we could use general fund to continue hardening with the fences, because we cannot, we cannot buy materials or pay for the construction of fencing around our schools out of referendum.
Right.
We had an attorney, Attorney Gibbs, provided that documentation to us that we could not use it for anything other than operational.
Right, I remember that. And when do we expect the, the hardening to be completed? And the reason why I'm asking this question is because there's obviously still a huge need, and a third of it for better or worse is being covered by the state, but the rest of it we're having to come up with. So if we don't have that funding referendum dollars to help keep our schools safe, then that's a huge issue. And so my question again is, when will we be at the point where our schools are hardened? I guess there'll always be things that will need to be done, but, but the, the biggest push.
I would defer that question to.
Robert Knight?
No, to Dennis Mc.
Oh, Dennis, I mean, yeah.
Robert Knight.
And Dennis together.
Yeah, they work through that together.
Right, okay.
But what we can do is, if they have not spent those dollars this year, we can assign it, meaning we'll carry it over to the next year, and it will be there when they do use it.
Yes.
If that was, if that was your concern, yes, we can do that.
Well, yes, and then also, too, the, getting the materials and the supplies, you know, the supply chain, as most of us know, has been delayed. But, but my real concern is the, and, and also, maybe it will get to the point where our, our major cost for hardening will be done, and then we won't have that big, big expense anymore. But it sounds like that's going to be a ways down the road. And in the meantime, we're getting the safe schools allocation, we're using referendum funds, and we're using general funds to cover our school safety needs. So if any one of those goes away.
That's been our concern for a few years now.
Right.
That's because of the additional requirements of safe schools and not getting the additional funding. What is not on here is that we, we do get a grant for hardening, but we don't know what that grant is yet. But again, when we receive those dollars, it'll be used on the next project, that's waiting. So they have laid out what schools need fencing, what schools need cameras, what school needs the door buzzers. And the, you know, in the beginning, the issue was, we didn't have any money. Well, we have the funding now, it's not as much as we need. Now we've just got to get the equipment in and hire someone to handle it. And then we, we still have a long way to go, because they have a five-year plan, I believe, to get everything done.
Okay, which, so the need extends well beyond when our funding referendum will be sunsetting, unless it's renewed? Okay, all right.
Chair, there, I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Boston Ellis, because I know this was my question, you know, the 4.7 million change in actual tentative budget, and so thank you for the detail. Because I do think that for transparency's sake, it does help to show that while we have this, you know, 4.7 million increase essentially in, in what we're doing here, showing that all of it is grant funded and nearly all of it is federal grant funded, and this is unique grant funding that we're receiving because of COVID-19, and that there is potential that this will not be there in the next year, as we've seen on some of these grants that we received last school year.
An example is the School of Hope.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's gone. So, you know, it's not a problem, that's what we're here to do.
Right, no, absolutely.
And you will see an even larger amount, because we have submitted the ESER 2 grant in its totality, 56 million. So you will see the remaining parts of the ESER 2 grant when we do final. So when we have, between tentative and final, and, but we will have an explanation of why there's an increase.
Okay. Very good.
I do have one more question, because it just kind of jumped out at me a little bit with the IDEA, the IDEA B. And it says the added positions for the clerk specialist, and it's 1.2. Where is the .8? I was just like, I'm just kind of curious.
Probably at the district. Like with IDEA B, a lot of their units are 80% district, 20% the grant, or vice versa. 80% the grant, 20% the district. Because they can't charge all of their expenditures to the IDEA B grant, because they deal with, they deal with students that are not. because they deal with, they deal with students that are not, I don't consider exceptional. So they may be doing other things and so we can't charge their entire salary to that grant.
Right, okay, so I'm kind of curious, like, when something like that happens, maybe, if you could just have like a little bullet that could maybe say where the, you know, the point eight or, you know, point five is and what that costs. Because I'm just kind of curious, when I see that, I was like, I see the 73,000, but I'm curious what the whole picture looks like, if that makes sense, so.
If we were to fund that whole position?
If we were, what it looks like.
So which one are you asking to, are you saying going forward or you want us to go back and do that now?
Just going forward, but even that one, if you just want to answer that, I'm just curious what that number truly looks like for those.
Another, another reason it could be someone didn't start the beginning of the year. Especially if we're comparing actual to tentative. They didn't hire them day one. They might have hired them, you know, in November or December.
That makes sense too.
Yes.
Yeah, or maybe just have a bullet, like just worked for, just because when I'm sitting here, it makes me a little curious, like, well, what's the rest of the, you know, what is the whole story, I guess is what I'm asking.
And I have one more thing. Thinking about paras. And I'm seeing here under idea B that there are unfilled positions, 12 special needs paraprofessionals, I'll start with them. Are the special needs paraprofessionals only assigned to Hillcrest? Or are they at other schools that have self-contained classrooms around the county?
I couldn't answer that.
Okay.
I mean, we can get that answer too.
Okay, and the reason why that's important to me is because I know that we've been attritioning paras, which I'm on record for disagreeing with. But you already know that. And, but we also have this new issue of more and more paraprofessionals having to cover classrooms as teachers for long periods of time because of COVID, you know. And that could be three different classrooms in one day. You know, if a teacher is not feeling well and then they have to go out, the para gets pulled out of kindergarten and is now covering that class the rest of the day. But then maybe the day sub is available if they have one, comes in, takes that class. And then the paraprofessional may go back to kindergarten for a little while and then somebody else, you know, has to leave, so then they go out. And they are just being pulled in so many different directions. So I have two questions. The first one is that if we have unfilled special needs, do we have unfilled special needs paraprofessionals? And is it within the parameters, as long as there are ESE students, special needs students in a classroom, like an inclusion classroom? Would they be able to, to help in there? And then my second ask is that, I guess if we're, if we have unfilled positions for paraprofessionals, then there probably isn't a need to attrition anymore at this time? I'm not sure about that, but.
I can't answer that, but I know the special need paras are different.
Yes, because they have a longer day.
Well, they, they're like in a different bargaining unit or a part of their, their position. So they are treated. And then if you'll notice also, these are, these are grant funded units. So they will have specific responsibilities. So, I mean, so I saw Dr. Gullett write that down, so we can, we can find out that question, but that's outside of my purview.
Trying to get an idea of where the funding was coming from and then also make a point at the same time because I'm quite familiar with the special needs para job description. However, in these days and times, and I do know that they have a little bit more, their contract day is a little bit longer. Because it is implied of, you know, everything that they have to do. Well, if a para is being asked to teach a class, you know, which includes some planning and some wrap-up and debriefing at the end of the day, then it would seem to me that, that would, they would deserve to have at least that type of pay. So, you know, and I know there's a lot of threads to all of this, but I hope you see where I'm going.
Yes, Chair Thor, I certainly do and understand and the complexity of the different funding positions and the demand. And yes, I could tell you that we still do have vacancies. And to your point of attrition, yes, we've had that conversation, so we can provide that information to you.
Okay, great, all right, thank you. It kind of all went together because it's, it's money in need. And we need money. But we also need
Agreed, okay.
Okay.
If there are no other questions, then we'll get back to working on getting final budget. So it's to you on September 7th.
Yay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, as always, to you and your team. There's always one more thing in this life.
Because I asked her to remind me because I would not remember. There are some capital expenditures and technical services asking, can they go forward? And we typically don't allow that until you have said you're okay with that budget, the capital projects budget. So we would like your consensus to allow them to do. I believe they want to do some pressure washing. They want to do some pressure washing and that's a part of the 1.5 mil. And they've been hounding Latoya about releasing those funds. But we don't want to do that without your permission.
I'm comfortable.
Okay, okay.
They have work they want to do far be it from us.
I know.
Keep them from doing it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, is there any public comment? Seeing none, we will move on then to board concerns. We'll begin with Ms. Presspatino, anything for us? Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Gullett.
Thank you, no, I don't have anything additional, thank you for your input today.
Okay, thank you, Board Member Campbell.
I wanted to follow up on, you had asked me to come back with the information based on what the county decided on the American Rescue Plan dollars if they were going to be distributing to small businesses like they did with the CARES Act funding, and that is not a part of their plan. So we had discussed that and what that looks like for, as, the conversation was originally because of the $1,000 or to be determined bonus amount that we will be giving to certain employees. And so the alternative schools, unless they are, well, at this juncture, unless they're located in the city of Ocala and are nonprofit, they would not be eligible for any additional funding out of the American Rescue Plan. The county is determining potentially in October if they might also distribute some to nonprofits. But at this point, they're not distributing any to small businesses or, or anything at this point. But they are going to review it again in October.
And you'll keep us posted?
I absolutely will. Yes. That's all I had for you.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair King.
I do not have anything.
Okay, Attorney Powers?
I do, I don't, procedurally, I don't wish to reopen anything regarding the the resolution, but I do need clarification on a sentence that I just got prepared with the final copy. So would the board entertain such need for clarification?
Say it.
Okay, we had as to item 4C, which was previously had stated, persons for whom a face covering would cause impairment due to an existing health condition. This exception requires a physician's note that said individual has a condition that would be impaired and/or exacerbated. I modified that to the following in the final version. My trackpad here is being extra sensitive, so. Okay, the modification that I made was specifically as to all of the medically exempt, or to all of the physicians note that indicating that an individual has a condition. So it would now read under 4C, persons for whom a face covering would cause impairment due to an existing health condition. This exception requires a licensed healthcare provider's note that said individual is medically exempt.
I'm still not okay with the word impairment, but that's just me.
Say it again. Persons for whom a face covering would cause impairment.
Due to an existing health condition. This exception requires a licensed healthcare provider's note that said individual is medically exempt. So the first part of that statement is outlining that we've carved out an exemption. And it's for, it's intended for people for whom a face covering would cause impairment. And then the second part of that is that the exception requires simply a note from a licensed healthcare provider that says they're medically exempt. So the question I intend to clarify is that, that first portion, I've removed it in the second portion, but that first portion that says, persons for whom a face covering would cause impairment due to an existing health condition. That that's the exceptions. So if their exception is intended to be more expansive, I need to know what language to use. It's not just people who would, for whom a face covering would cause impairment. There, the other language suggested maybe persons for whom a licensed healthcare professional has indicated that a face covering is inadvisable.
I was proposing, I'm going to put forward persons who have an existing health condition and then the second part of what you just said because then the judgment is on the physician, not on us. And, you know, so if we just have it say that, exemptions, because that's section four, exemptions to the face covering requirement. Persons who have an existing health condition and then you'd need a note. And again, that would be putting the onus on the physician, not on us to determine. And, you know, there may be a physician out there that said if a, if their patient has a hangnail, then they don't have to wear a mask, but how do we police that? And do we really want to?
Okay, I'm working on this here.
But that's just my input.
So that language, if we went with that, would say persons who have an existing health condition. Period. Or who have an existing health condition and whose healthcare provider, no.
This exception requires a licensed healthcare provider.
So stop, full stop, persons who have an existing health condition, period. Or existing health condition which recludes.
None of that, let's move right on to that second sentence about the licensed medical professional and see how that reads. Persons who have an existing health condition, period. And then the part that you said about the licensed
This exception requires a licensed healthcare provider's note that said individual is medically exempt.
Yes. We even removes additional verbiage there, persons for whom, how did, what is, what do you say? Persons have, with an existing medical condition?
Yeah, persons who have an existing
Existing medical condition require a licensed healthcare provider's note that said individual is medically exempt.
There you go.
Take out the, this exemption requires, take out the period, make it one sentence.
Yep.
Persons with existing medical conditions require a licensed healthcare provider's note.
Yep.
Persons with existing?
Health condition require, because we're already saying this is an exemption, so we don't have to say exemption in the bullet. So persons with an existing health condition require a licensed healthcare provider's note that said individual is medically exempt. So you had all the rest of it, we're just changing.
Persons with existing health conditions require a licensed healthcare.
All the rest of it, right.
Gotcha, okay.
I think that's really clear. And I think it's staying in our lane because there are just so many possible scenarios with that. How do you feel, Vice Chair King?
I agree, there's a lot of different scenarios. But this makes me think about the exemptions and say it takes three weeks, four weeks to get that note. So what, what will happen? Did we ever decide what will happen with that? Because this, you know, started today and then that will happen, so.
Well, and we're not requiring a specific note, are we? Or like, would it be enough evidence to be able for someone to bring forward? You know, I guess there would have to be some sort of statement. I was just thinking, I was just at the doctor.
I wonder if, I use the word may, but I wonder if just for these next couple of weeks, they, we need to say something like, they may bring in the physician's note or the license, whatever. We said just to take, so it's not.
As soon as, you know, I don't want to just say as soon as possible, but as soon as, what is that great sentence?
As soon as practicable?
Yes, thank you, as soon as practicable. And they should communicate with their supervisor, you know, their principal, yeah, their, right. Because that's the trust thing that we're all trying to work on here and that's part of our strategic plan. And that if an employee is being, you know, berated or, or, you know, there's all these situations and they all happen in public schools from time to time. And, and we've got to get that out of here. You know, people have got to feel comfortable without fear of retaliation to come forward, say, look, the next time I can get into the doctor, I'll come in on a, if I'm, you know, if there's a cancellation, but then, you know, and there's someone to cover my class, trust me, I'm on it, I'm going to do this. We've got, if we don't have trust, we don't have anything.
So I guess just use the word practical.
Practicable.
However you order that.
As soon as pract
I don't even know the sentences to use there. It's, I'm trying to think of
Shall get a note from a licensed medical professional as soon as practicable. Please communicate with your, Dr. Gullett, your, yes.
Supervisor.
Okay.
A persons for whom a face, I'm sorry. Persons with existing health conditions require a licensed healthcare provider's note.
Said individual's medically exempt, period.
Said individual's medically exempt.
Period.
Excuse me. And then the next sentence, this clarifying sentence as to giving them time?
Maybe please communicate, or employees should communicate with their immediate supervisor in a timely fashion or some, you know, to, I don't, Dr. Gullett, help us. What do you want them to say?
We said their intent, could we use that language? So if an employee plans to seek their advice and a note from their healthcare provider, they could communicate to their supervisor their intent. I have scheduled, I have scheduled appointment, I have planned to go, and this is my intent. Would that suffice?
That pass legal muster?
I think any of this would, it's just a matter of how we went to do it.
That notifies the supervisor and.
Okay, so let's, let's read the, the simple sentence that we had because, because that was really good. And the only thing that I think we would add to that was as soon as practicable. And then the second sentence would be what you just said.
I'm going to, I'm going to request that we modify this one way. That is, persons seek, not just persons with existing health conditions require doctors, or licensed healthcare providers note, but persons seeking exemption.
Yes.
Persons seeking exemption with existing health, sorry, persons with existing health conditions seeking exemption require a licensed healthcare provider's note that said individual is medically exempt.
As soon as practicable.
I would say, at this point, employees, so persons for whom a face covering may not apply to everyone. We're also talking about vendors and visitors and such. So are we going to have people who are like parents who wish to exercise a medical exemption of this as well? I mean, I suppose we could. Or vendors, for example. Not just employees, so. And how do they go about then documenting if they're going to take a few weeks to get there?
Who are they giving their note to?
Right. So if we've got, for example, a vendor, I'm not trying to make this complex, I'm just trying to foresee a problem.
It is complex, so have at it.
So if, for example, we have a vendor who works on campus or a So if, for example, we have a vendor who works on campus or a someone other than an employee and they wish to seek a medical exemption, this section is going to apply to them. Now, all they have required is a note from their doctor. But, uh, I suppose they can provide that at the school to which they are going to attend, or they can provide it to the district offices. But then the question becomes, if they're going to communicate, hey, I've got an appointment with my doctor and we're going to have that relationship with them, who, who is it that they report to?
I see what you're saying.
Now, it doesn't apply in cases like for, um, we, we've, we've written this out separately with, um, our, uh, school resource officers, because public safety, health, fire, those people, their agencies, we, we have specifically said here that their agencies are going to dictate what their mask requirement is. So that's under I, public safety, fire, and other life and, life safety and healthcare personnel, as their protective equipment requirements will be governed by their respective agencies. But this is now dealing with the other people that are, that are covered in this, in this resolution, which is also visitors, staff, you know, vendors. It, all persons that work, visit, or enter upon district property. So my suggestion would be that for this particular exemption, the medical exemption would be that we alter it to say, as we've altered to say persons with existing health conditions seeking exemption require a licensed healthcare provider's note that said individual is medically exempt. I just need a phrase as to, to whom they're, to provide that note. Is it to the principal of the school campus on, or the superintendent or to whom, to whom they're providing documentation?
We say the superintendent or their designee, because a designee would automatically then be school principal and the, and the school principal could designate the AP if they're not there that day. I, I don't know, I'm, that's a question.
Or should I simply leave it, they, the, uh, require, or we said that, uh, require a require that the district be provided with a licensed healthcare provider's note? Or this exception requires a licensed healthcare provider's note that said individual is medically exempt, comma, to be submitted to.
May I interject?
Yes, sir.
Please.
The form that we created and posted for employees reads, please return this form and medical documentation to your supervisor.
Right, and the question is, what about if other people are going to be able to get a medical exemption besides employees? For example, a parent, a volunteer, a, um, vendor. They are also subject to a medical exemption. If they are, to whom do they give the note?
Appropriate school employee?
So, so to clarify, I'm, I'm going to ask the question, are we, we are saying then that a parent is going to provide their personal medical note to a school district official?
If a parent seeks to exercise a medical exemption while on campus, that will be the requirement. And then if we further add language in here, which is saying that we're going to give some long grace period for them to get to a doctor, now we really have a little bit more to dig into, because then that doesn't just imply to employees, that applies to vendors, that applies to visitors, that applies to.
Certainly, and I, I concur. I just, I have to say as the superintendent that my concern is that we're going down a path of putting our employees in a very compromised situation. I think it could make them uncomfortable. And I just want to share some concern. I, I don't want our employees to feel that they're having to have this conversation about a parent potentially of a student that they're serving and their personal choices. I, I just have to issue some concern here, that, that I just don't want to put our employees in that spot, or, or parents even, but.
And personally, while I understand the purpose of a medical exemption and while we are saying that this potentially would qualify for visitors and or volunteers, et cetera. I do think that because we spell out that violations of this policy mean that that person will be asked to wear a face covering and that if they don't comply, they may be escorted off the campus. I, I think that frankly covers it, rather than to say you have to give us a medical note in order for you to not wear that mask. I think, I think we cleared it up in the violation part to make it not quite so stringent on our employees and the responsibility they would have to hold someone else not affiliated with Marion County Public Schools medical information in some folder or somewhere, somehow. I mean, I think that we've, personally, I think that we've cleared it up just by saying if you're in violation, here, we're going to offer you a mask, and if you don't want to do it, then we may escort you off the campus or we may not. But, and that would have to be on a case by case basis, rather than saying, okay, now if you're actually not going to wear it, you need to hand me a medical note.
Yeah, I just don't think that's workable. I, I think that's invasive and intrusive, however, you needed to raise it up as a point because we have these people coming on campus. So, uh, I feel a lot more comfortable with what you just shared, Board Member Campbell, honestly, because, you know, a parent could be coming in for a parent conference after school. They can come in, everybody's social distance, they don't have a mask on, people are three, at least three feet apart at the table. Yeah.
And, and I'm concerned as well for the other side of, we're, we're talking a lot about collaboration, improving communication.
Right.
Building trust and you don't want parents to feel like.
They're not welcome.
They're not welcome, and, and I have concern about that.
Well, yeah, and if a parent is, wants to come or is willing to come for a parent conference, hopefully it's for a positive thing. You know, we want to encourage that all day long, you know, PBIS style, Mr. Avery, you know, let's, let's not make the process, you know, kill the pony.
Right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Important.
Language clarification, are you good?
I think I have it now. Thank you, I'm sorry to bring up the difficult things, but as soon as.
You have to, that's.
When you tug at one thing, two others pop out, so.
That's why you have a complete document, so you can't look at it in just individual sentence, sometimes you have to look at the entire document.
Right, and that's why we have a school board attorney to help guide us through these kinds of things in a collaborative process. Thank God. Okay. All right, um, I guess that was the last one. Yes, I, the only thing I have is that there was a question today about, you know, whose guidelines are we following? And we are following, so, trying to follow so many different entities' guidelines. So I just would like to share for clarification that during typical times, the superintendent takes care and oversees the day-to-day operation of our public schools. The school board simply provides oversight, sets policy, takes, takes fiscal responsibility of those things, and that's the beauty of local control, the people that are the closest to the situation and have those relationships make the decisions. In the situation that we currently find ourselves in, we have CDC guidelines because we're accountable for everybody, and then we also have our local health department that we talk to at least weekly, usually more often. Then we have our state board of education that is also weighing in. And finally, we now also have the federal government, which is also weighing in and, and to use a, frankly, arguing and, and chicken fighting with our state officials. So this puts local school boards and locally controlled entities squarely in the crosshairs of a lot of issues that we would at typical times not have to face. So we are where we are, we are going to continue to be strong, we're, we are going to soldier on, we're going to keep our mind on our game, which is educating kids and making people feel welcome in our schools and making accommodations so that we can get back to level footing, hopefully put this, kick this new delta to the curb and, and get on with life. So that's, that's my game plan anyway, and I appreciate everybody hanging with us. These are definitely extraordinary times. And, um, I would say these are the times that try school board members souls. But we'll make it through, we'll make it through, because we have a great team, so thank you, everyone. If there is nothing else, then we will go ahead and adjourn at 1:00 PM. Thank you.